Welcome to you all to the Monday, July 17, 2017 work session of the Falls Church City Council. This is a work session, so the public's certainly welcome to attend, but the conversation is limited to the folks at the table. But we're having a public hearing next week. If anyone wants to make any comments, you're welcome to do so at that hearing. We're fortunate to have our friends from the school board here tonight, Dr. Noonan and Mr. Webb, and they're going to be talking a lot about school needs as we have our discussion about CIP. Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and sort of take it from there?
Yeah, just in terms of other -- thank you, Mayor, members of council. Other things that we will try to cover tonight with you is the school administration has some updates on the feasibility study and some renderings of the conceptual school. We have an update on the CIP financing. Essentially, the update is to add tax yield for the 10 acres into our financial modeling, so we'll discuss that. We do plan to have a town hall meeting on Wednesday, so we plan to cover both of those things that you'll see tonight. And then, of course, next Monday, we have the CIP amendment and the bond referendum ordinance for public hearing and for consideration for second reading. So the request tonight is, A, to receive the information, but then, at the end, if there are any requests for the changes or for changes to the CIP ordinance, to have that discussion tonight and see if there's consensus on that, and we'll have the documents then prepared for you based on that consensus.
Dr. Noonan or Chairman Webb?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Thank you very much for having us here. I'd like to welcome Chairman Webb as well. We -- as I was thinking about what we would talk about tonight, one of the things that I just wanted to, I guess more than anything, talk through was some changes since the last time we were together. There hasn't been a substantial amount of difference since the last time we were together with respect to overall costs and the project itself, but I did want to update you on a couple of things. The first is, and I think this has come around -- Mr. Shields, has this gotten out yet? This updated?
There's a stack of them. Is that updated?
Yeah, this is the updated timeline. So in the last -- our last opportunity together, I shared with you a timeline as well as some backup documentation that spoke to the fiscal responsiveness and the number of options that we were looking at and the options matrix. And I want to thank -- I actually want to thank council member Mary Beth Conley for her work in taking another shot at the campus project timeline. And you'll see in Tan, at the request of the planning commission, we did add a number of things that have happened since 1949 into the timeline. So if you're interested on, for example, when the voters approved the $12.8 million bond referendum for George Mason High School and George Mason Middle School renovation, that has been added into the timeline. Additionally, since the last time we met, we did have a school board work session where we looked at a number of the cost-cutting options in community school that we have selected as the primary target school that we'd like to look at. And so we looked at a number of items such as reuse of furniture to reduce the cost of FF&amp;E, reduction of classrooms, either four or 10, decreasing the performance department size, decreasing the auxiliary gym size, decreasing the athletic size, eliminating geothermal, deferring athletic improvements, demolition of the site, and additional potential softer cost savings. And those, again, would be the FF&amp;E or the furniture fixtures and equipment. And where we landed was, there are a number of things in this list that we believe, as a school board and as a staff, that we can achieve some savings within. For example, we are fairly confident that we'll be able to reuse some of the existing furniture that is at George Mason High School to reduce the cost of the furniture fixtures and equipment. We believe that we likely can decrease the size of the auxiliary gym and the Department of Athletics. We don't have any interest, frankly, in eliminating geothermal at this time because we really believe that the overall cost savings down the line makes it worthy of keeping, the operational costs. We had a spirited conversation about whether or not to pass the demolition of the GM site to the contractor, and in the end, we felt like, I believe, and I won't -- I'll let you correct me, Mr. Chair, I believe that we decided that we'd like to keep that as a cost for us as opposed to passing it on to the contractor because one of the concerns, generally speaking, that we had was the potential for a site sitting across from our high school that was just unusable for a practice field and the like, which is where the new practice field will go. So in the end, we believe that we can realize some savings. I don't know what the total number would be, but we feel like it would be in the ballpark of between $4 and $6 million. However, not knowing what the overall final cost was going to be, we believe that it would be prudent to remain with the $120 million bond. So that's some new information since the last time we met, is that we went through this exercise, and we do believe that there are some opportunities for savings, but wouldn't recommend changing the bond amount. But hopefully, that last tranche that we pull would be reduced commensurate to those savings. I did prepare just a couple of slides. I thought that they would be of interest to you as you're considering your work this evening. The first was just a reminder of the options matrix, and I'll flash this up quickly because I'm sure you've seen it. Just to give you a sense of where we are, that second column is community school. And in comparison, or by contrast, to the other schools that are marked in red in the x-axis across the top, you will see that it meets all the green principles of design and criteria that we had set with the exception of continuum of education, which was its proximity to the UVA Virginia Tech campus. And the only reason it's yellow is Perkins Eastman said to me, "We couldn't have something that was completely green," so they felt like they needed to put a yellow in. So just as a reminder, that's where we are with community school. It does meet all of the needs that we have. Perkins Eastman did do a final-stage conceptual drawing of the site plan that I wanted to share with you tonight. These will be put on to posters as well and available on Wednesday night when we hold our town hall meeting. But here, you'll see kind of going off with a little bit more detail some of the conversation that we've had before. You'll see, again, just to reorient, the proposed high school academic bar, which would be here in the middle of the larger property, if you will. Coming back to the right is the proposed high school commons area with the gym and the theater on either side, and where it would connect then to Mary Ellen Henderson. The entrance of Mary Ellen Henderson wouldn't change, and the new entrance for the new George Mason site would be here, where it says "E" with "School Street," sort of creating that promenade look as people are driving down "School Street." This field was a significant driver in the decision not to pass along the demolition costs to the proposed developer because if that were to sit there and the demolition hadn't been done, as you can tell, we would have lost a practice field and a teaching space. So rather than putting that at risk, we decided to keep that cost in the overall plan. Here is a more clarified rendering, if you will, of what the site would look like, looking at it from far above the Virginia Tech -- Virginia Tech Virginia site. Here, you'll see the new proposed entrance of George Mason High School. Again, this is the academic bar that looks out this direction. You'll see that they did render it with some solar panels, which potentially could be something we could look at. And again, here, you'll see on either side, the gym, the auditorium, the cafeteria, and the like. The next is the potential look of the main entrance and what it could look like. So if you're driving down over here on the right-hand side, you would see "School Street" coming in. You'll see a lot of glass, a lot of wide open, sort of that promenade entry area that Perkins Eastman talks a lot about, that's welcoming. And on the right-hand side would potentially be the gym, and on the left-hand side would potentially be the auditorium. I thought that was a really nice-looking drawing, so I wanted to share it. And the last is potential sort of outline of what it would really look like as you're coming in. So here, as you come in, again, you would have the guidance area and administrative area. We would have the new main gym. And on the right-hand side and on the left-hand side would be the auditorium. This would also be the dining area and the kitchen, and this is actually where the connection to Mary Ellen Henderson would happen, would be right there in that kitchen area. However, the proximity of the two buildings crossing this new courtyard would allow for the Mary Ellen Henderson students to potentially make the walkover and get into the academic bar. Currently, we have about 65% of our students at Mary Ellen Henderson that are taking at least one high school-level class, whether it's world languages or math class. And they may not take it at the high school currently. They may take it at Mary Ellen Henderson, but this provides a lot of flexibility for us to potentially serve the middle school students at the high school as well. Here, it breaks it down just a little bit further. Here, you'll see the second floor -- sorry, the third floor, what it looks like. Our second floor would be here. You'd see the mezzanine auxiliary gym, and this might be where the world language is in a large, high-C area, flexible space. Third floor would be interdisciplinary and cross-disciplinary studies, along with social studies, science labs. And then that fourth floor would be some more science labs, and here, you'd see some more interdisciplinary, cross-curricular work. This speaks specifically to our international baccalaureate program in English. And then at the top floor, we would have our mathematics. We'd have a potentially a green terrace out there, and next to that would be two science labs. And the proximity to the science labs would allow us to use that green terrace for teaching purposes and the like. So those were the new pieces of information that we've had since the last time we had an opportunity to be here. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Why don't we see if there are any questions at the table before we move on? Anyone have any questions about what we just saw or heard? Ms. Hardy?
Great, thanks, Dr. Noonan. Quick question. I believe this was the case, but I wanted to confirm. Did Perkins cost estimate this building so that it could include a sixth floor as needed as space became constrained and we needed to grow further?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question, and that was part of our driver in not being particularly clear as a board, whether or not -- board and staff, whether or not we would reduce the footprint of the building by four classrooms or 10 classrooms, because we did go back and ask Perkins Eastman to cost out what it would be to put a sixth floor on if we had to. And if it's okay with you, just to make sure that I get the number right, if I could get that to you in the future, I would. But what I will say is, based on the conversations with Andrea Shaw, it was not a cost-efficient way to save money. The overall cost in the end would actually likely exceed the reduction we would be able to take by reducing by, say, 10 classrooms now. Does that make sense?
I think so, but I also wanted to make sure that the building could accommodate a sixth floor should we need it down the road.
Yeah, well, we certainly could build it to accommodate a sixth floor. What I understand from Perkins Eastman is that the construction costs would be amplified because of the need to reinforce that fifth floor, and it sounded like the overall cost of that reinforcement would exceed the cost of the savings that we could capture with a 10-room reduction. So instead of doing a sixth floor, we should build the five floors as large as we could. But I guess the short answer to your question is, we could build it to accommodate a sixth floor. I just think it would cost a little bit more money, and I don't know what that number is right now.
So as it stands now, the way it's constructed, the $120 cost would not include the ability to add a sixth floor on should we need to expand that way?
That's a better way to ask it. Thank you, or more clear to me.
So if we can go back to maybe the slide that shows the layout, because my concern would be that while this should last us a good 20-plus years, I think, if not longer, I want to make sure we don't back ourselves in a corner where we don't have land to add spaces needed.
One here.
Maybe the bird's-eye view, the complete -- yeah. So if we ran out of space, let's say 25, 30 years down the line, we'd be taking up field space to add more classrooms? Or we'd have to spend a lot of money adding to that tower, right?
We could add to the tower, to the academic bar, or we could potentially come this direction into that courtyard. That was a conversation that we did have. But we wouldn't necessarily get into the field space because I don't think that we would propose that it goes this direction. I think we would come in this way.
Yeah, I'll leave it up to you all to discuss kind of the best way to do it, but I want to make sure that this one would be flexible enough that we could either add on to the tower, or we'd have room where MEH could expand, just enough so that we don't run out of room up there?
Yep. So the MEH expansion is over here, just by the way. That's an eight to 10 classroom addition there, and I do believe that we could expand into that courtyard. A small addition, not unlike the proposed addition at MEH.
Would we lose, I guess, a lot of light into that tower, then?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Duncan?
I'm not going to get into too many of those kind of details, but if you included central office on a sixth floor with the option somewhere down the line, if you needed it for class space, to move central office somewhere else, would the savings in either rent for central office or, you know, space that central office takes up in some academic building that we would need for classes, would it make sense to add that in? It's just something to think about and talk about in keeping with your ways to economize, which are, you know, it's always commendable to try to economize, but -- and I'm not getting into, you know, the details of that either, but anytime I see, you know, reduce the size of the auxiliary gym, I think of all the unpleasant hours I spent sitting on the wrestling mats watching my child play, you know, basketball because we couldn't afford to have enough of an aux gym to have a couple of rows of seats. And I just -- we just don't want to do that. I mean, this is, in my opinion, this is a school that needs to be built with expectations of, you know, the city being a great and dynamic community. So those are sort of two separate thoughts, but the central office question, as part of the high school, is something I would be curious about the relative cost of.
We could certainly take that and do a little bit of a cost analysis over a 10-year timeframe to see what the rent versus the cost of the addition would be.
And just real quick to the other part of your question or your comment, with the aux gym and with the auditorium as well, what we're -- what Perkins has proposed is actually bigger than jurisdictions that are bigger than what we -- where we are right now. So that reduction is not a one that's going to, I think, cause a problem that you're referring to, and I think I agree, we wouldn't want to do that. But when we're looking at it from the perspective of Arlington, Montgomery County jurisdictions that are probably about twice as size, or it's not bigger than what we have, I think we can afford to cut a little bit off of those to save some of the -- some potential dollars there in the project.
If I could just add, having been part of that working group, when we saw the detailed benchmarking, I feel pretty good about these. I think we're a little conservative in some of the savings, and I know we don't want to bank on too much, but I feel like doing reductions now based on benchmarking is far wiser than trying to value-engineer down the road. So I'm glad that we're using that benchmarking data where we can say, hey, you know, for the number of students we expect for the size of aux gyms compared to our neighbors, we are pretty generous. So I'm glad to see these reductions being made, and hopefully, we can keep finding more so that, as Dr. Noonan said, in that final tranche of bond issuance, we aren't fully using the $120 if we don't have to.
I did find that, just FYI, the estimate for Perkins Eastman is between $2 and $4 million to increase the size of the structural, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, and sprinkler systems to accommodate an additional sixth floor. It's about a 5% premium on the current building cost.
Did you say $6 million?
Between $2 and $4, to do a sixth floor.
And would that be fitting it out as well, or just what would that -- what would the?
I need to find out. Let me get you a better answer.
I mean, at the end of the day, putting up on Mr. Duncan's comment, if we pay $350,000 a year or thereabouts in rent costs, then we ought to be able to figure out whether it's economical to build it and save that rent, particularly if it can be reused at some point, to Ms. Hardy's point, if it can be reused for additional expansion if need be. That's something I think we ought to give some serious consideration to.
Gotcha.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I applaud all the great thinking that's gone into this, but at the same time, I would caution about being a little bit too myopic about just leaving 10 classrooms on the table. Just looking at where the enrollment is projected, it's tight in many places, and of course, you can already see the pressures mounting for TJ and Mount Daniel and Mary Ellen Henderson, and then to remove these 10 classrooms from the very beginning, I think, is poor economy. By the time we get through having yet another round robin discussion on what to do with Mount Daniel, how much do we pay for in addition to TJ and what we need to put on Mary Ellen Henderson, it's -- any discussion, just in context of George Mason, with regard to we need more room is going to be probably nonstarter. It'll be a nonstarter for likely several decades, so to eliminate those probably necessary spaces at this juncture, I think is poor economy. It really is. Also, the discussion has taken to the community at large, the 65% people that live here that don't have any kids in the school system, but support the schools, avidly support the schools to look at the reductions with regard to the performance department and auxiliary gym, you know, that doesn't even begin to get into the discussion on whether we need a swimming pool or other kinds of things. So I don't know whether you've taken a look at some of the larger performance spaces, for example Wakefield, which can accommodate yet another performance venue in the evenings well beyond what the students need. But to reduce it at this point, I'm not sure that, looking at what we just saw with regard to the space layout, that the auditorium provides anything more than just a minimum for the students. So I think it'll be an uphill discussion with regard to people saying, what about us, the 65% that are still here and want to take advantage of that space? So I would urge you to relook at that. Yeah, I know it's money, but still, you're 120 mil into this. It could be even more. And if some of the people around this table have urged the city management, for example, to look, including revenues generated by economic development, I kind of mixed feelings about that. I don't really have a pronouncement on that, but obviously raises the question of, you know, at what point do you say, this is a risk that we take on by saying, yeah, we expect this kind of money to be raised with the economic development? So leading that discussion aside for the moment, you'll recall that the discussion that Cox brought, presentation with regard to geothermal. I have to say, I was a little bit disappointed when Eastern Perkins gave the presentation on the cost of geothermal because they were adamant, this $1.7 million. But that is a situation where the -- you have a school that has a traditional air conditioning and heating system, and then you add some geothermal. So they call that the hybrid system, and I think, if you recall that conversation that Cox said that it would add at the most $350,000 to have geothermal. You could do away with all this other stuff, and there are examples just across the border where schools entirely are being outfitted to run on geothermal. As a matter of fact, that Wakefield, the last time I saw it, they had just completed a geothermal system to the extent that they had put in traditional air handling units and chillers and all that stuff. They were ripping brand-new units off the roof because the geothermal just didn't need that. So I would say here, you've got kind of a mistaken estimating, and you need to change Having said that, again, going to, you know, the enrollment numbers here, how do you -- how do you present a reduced footprint and teaching facility faced with these tremendous needs that are projected to be in front of us?
I think, Mr. Z, that's a great question, and it's one that I -- you know, one of the things that I think we're all committed to is making sure that whatever we build will stand the test of time. I don't think any of us want to build something that in 10 years, we're going to have to come back and look at. I believe what we would be building now would be sufficient from a percent usage for quite a long time, a decade or more. And at that point, when we get into the 2027 timeline, when we get to 1,224 students, we may need to utilize the building differently so that it's not just used, for example, a classroom is used five periods a day and sits vacant for two periods a day. We may need to add a sixth class into that classroom. So that may mean that if I'm a science teacher, teaching a science class, I don't have a classroom that is mine necessarily, but I float. I might go over here to teach a class, and I might need to teach a class over here, and I might teach somewhere else two or three other classes. So when we think about the actual utilization rate of that building, where the way that we're proposing out until 2027 is likely going to be less than a 70% utilization rate, and even when we get to the top number of 1,368 or 1,500, for that matter, we would be utilizing the building at about 75%. So that's a really comfortable place, I think, to be in with respect to the high school utilization in the very far-out years, out until probably 2035 or 2040. From there, each year, we would likely need to increase the utilization, but I don't see us in our lifetimes getting to 100% capacity in that building.
Okay, you're the expert, I'm not. Just from a perspective of the numbers that have been presented here, I just don't see how that works exactly the way you portray it, but I'll take your word for it. The other thing that jumps out, and it has always been something remarkable here, is that, you know, this is all about this school, our system, and yet, if you look at the upper right-hand quadrant, there's this huge parking lot. A huge parking lot that has maybe 10 cars the whole day. It's bigger than your football field. And yet, I don't see any discussion about getting to use that, how much it would cost, you know, just that partnering discussion that all of us have had.
Well, I would just -- let me, if I could maybe answer or respond. Those discussions have been had and are ongoing. They just haven't really been part of the public discourse, but we've certainly met with UVA and Virginia Tech, and the idea of either short-term parking, longer-term parking, all sorts of different possibilities to work together have been discussed. I just don't think we're at a point yet to really have anything as far as a long-term solution worked out. I'm not sure we even know our needs right now, frankly, in some regards, but those discussions have been had and are ongoing.
Okay, well, you know, I accept that. Hopefully, they'll bear -- those discussions will bear some fruit. You know, people want, and this community are willing to pay for additional community-facing facilities, not having to fill out the parking would be a tremendous asset in how the school gets used and designed.
We've had those discussions.
Can I ask a question about the long-term operations considerations that you've laid out? You say that the operational costs have averaged 4% per year over the last 10 years. That's based on what percentage enrollment growth in that same time period? How does that compare?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but I can get it.
Okay. I think that would be helpful to know because I -- what I'm trying to understand is, you know, is this tracking with enrollment growth, or is this tracking with enrollment growth plus something? And I think that's useful to know because we have these enrollment projections, and you've assumed that we will grow 4% going forward, but we have some pretty big growth numbers in the early years in those enrollment projections, and then you show that leveling off. And so I just want to understand in the longer term what we think is going to happen there. The other question I wanted to ask is just kind of, in order to do full disclosure, we know that the condition of the high school is pretty precarious right now. There's been a lot of long-term maintenance. It's been deferred. We're patching, we're fixing, you know, we're holding our breaths that nothing happens before we come up with a plan. If the referendum does not pass for this school in November, what are the immediate needs that the school division will need to keep George Mason High School going? If you don't have that, I mean, I just think it's important that we talk about that.
I think some of the major things that you would be looking at almost fairly quickly because they are well beyond end-of-life are HVAC systems, boilers, are all well over that and looking at that, and looking at, I estimate, and we had a conversation about this in the last meeting, a couple hundred thousand, $2 million to replace those, to ensure that those systems are continuing to be useful or brand-new, to make sure that the school building itself is useful and safe for the students who are going to be in those buildings as we continue, and if November does not pass.
And I think I'm just looking for a simpler answer to make sure that it's on the table, which is, if the referendum does not pass in November, what will be that urgent ask in dollars? You know, what are you going to come forward and say, I need this now, because I can't, you know, if I can't build a new high school soon, what am I going to have to do? I think that's just very important to have. I know the number is much smaller than 120 million, but I think people need to understand the magnitude of the urgent repairs that are required.
Thanks. I don't have that right now, but I can certainly pull some information.
I think it just might be helpful to have for Wednesday night, if we can.
Do you have some, Ms. Carty?
I was just recalling a conversation, I think we had maybe four or five months ago, where Dr. Schiller said that we had done something with the roof, where we got insurance, we would patch the roof and then get insurance so that it wouldn't fail, and the roof cost wouldn't be that exorbitant amount, so I wanted to make sure that that was still the case, that we don't have kind of this ticking time bomb there.
There was a solution that was less expensive than actually completely fixing the roof, and that has been done, and big rain came, I guess, last weekend, it's holding. So, yes, we have put a solution in place that is, for right now, is taking care of what we were concerned about, but I do think that's potentially something that would come into, into cost as well of well beyond, if November fails and we have to do some immediate work, I do think that is something that we'll come back around to potentially have to get looked at again. But that solution is a good one right now, that, you know, that it's not raining on our kids' heads now, we're in buckets. So, that's, we definitely have worked hard to make sure that we got something to take care of that.
One more, if I may. So, it wouldn't be a proper school facilities discussion if I didn't bring up TJ. So, you're probably expecting that. So, on the point of TJ, I just wanted to confirm, the thinking is still that we would do TJ with a standalone addition there, and we wouldn't be thinking of needing additional space up here to accommodate some sort of grade shifting, like if we needed to move fifth out of TJ up to MEH, that we were, that was kind of the plan going in, so we wouldn't need to be thinking about using space up here for that?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. I've got just a couple of odds and ends. So, just to confirm, this is a conceptual drawing or conceptual idea from Perkins Eastman? You haven't retained an architect, you will not do that. You would do an RFP to get an architect to do the final design of the school, is that right?
That's correct. We're in the process of potentially looking at an RFQ right now, just to begin eliminating people, so that when we do have the opportunity to get an architect, we could go out to RFQ with a shorter list, yes.
And when would you anticipate doing that?
The middle of November, at least going out to RFP, because we're putting together the RFQ now.
Okay. And in your drawing, or the rendering, or the site plan on the screen, there looks like there are two parking lots, I can't see very well, but two parking lots on either end of the park, is that right? And how many parking spaces did you have there?
I can't remember exactly.
You guys still going for 400 parking spaces?
Yeah.
It's about 3, right around 350, which includes the curve over by the baseball field.
Okay. And is that curved by the baseball field? That doesn't include any of the Womata Ring Road, does it? Are you anticipating it somehow to be vacated?
No, it does not.
Okay, so that road will go right on the outside of that?
Mm-hmm.
So, there'll sort of be a road, and then the park, we'll be using their road, and then we'll have the parking, or we're going to have our own road and their road?
I think the way, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not exactly sure the answer to your question, but I can find out.
Is that a private road, Wyatt, or is that a public road?
It is owned and operated by Womata.
So, you should keep in mind that we wouldn't have a right to use that road save for their permission unless what Mr. Shields just said is inaccurate.
I don't believe that this conceptual design got into the Womata Ring Road at all.
Okay. What's that?
The drawing really looks like it's inside the Ring Road.
Okay. Well, there's some things to consider, I think.
But that's a good point, good point, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, maybe be able to get the right to use, in which case, maybe we don't build our own road.
My recollection was is it ties into it, so you can exit that parking and get onto the Ring Road, which would be, which would make a lot of sense.
That's at the top there, you can kind of see, yeah.
We need to confirm that with Perkins Eastman. I think arguably, you could say it's not critical that that happened, it would improve flow if it did.
That's the kind of conversation, I think, we ought to need to know what you're thinking about doing, and so in conversations with Womata, we could say, we want to be able to tie into your road, you know, because if they say, we can't do it for some reason, then you don't want to have to redesign things. And that, is that a practice field at the end of that promenade as well, or the end of the, this is a practice field right here?
Yes, sir.
So, that wouldn't be like a pub, would that be publicly available for use?
It would be publicly available for use after school hours.
Okay. And the road at the top, it says School Street, is that the current road that's there now, basically, or would it be a different location? You know, the road that gets into the high school, is that basically the same location, or is it different?
Yeah.
Pretty much same location, I believe, in what's there now that comes off of Hancock.
I got it. Okay. That's all the questions I had. Do we want to go on to the next phase of this, the CIP financing update?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we'll need to get the keyboard back, so we can key up a different slide. Ms. Bower's going to pass out some 11-by-17s. So, what, the new information that we'll discuss tonight is how to factor in potential economic yield from the 10 acres of land that's potentially for commercial development on the campus, as shown above conceptually. What we have shown up to this point is factoring the sale value or the transaction value from a sale or lease, and you've looked at that in the past. We've run the fiscal impact model on the Alvarez and Marcel scenario, and making a couple of assumptions, we arrive, and one of the assumptions is that the model, Alvarez and Marcel has very small units. You may recall that from their presentation.
I'm sorry, I don't follow, small units.
They do have, in their program, they had 816 units in their program, but they were very small in size, like 700 square feet on average.
Like one bedroom, a lot of one-bedroom units.
So, they have lots of, they have 200-plus studios, 243 one-bedrooms, 244 one-plus dens, and then 100 that are larger than that. And so, that has a very small pupil ratio based on our experience in the city, and we've got a lot of data now in terms of what the pupil generation rate is based on bedroom count. So, what we did is we took what the model kicked out for pupil generation, and it increased it by 50% just as a, as a potential contingency. The bottom line is, is that the fiscal impact model has a net fiscal impact of $3.1 million is projected for that Alvarez-Marcel program. Now, we'll meet with Economic Working Group potentially this Friday to discuss that scenario, sort of do a deep dive into the model, as well as some potential other development scenarios, higher ratios of commercial or other alternatives, to explore, you know, how that might impact the net fiscals. But so, what we will show tonight is, okay, then if we take that number of net fiscal impact of $3.1 million and phase it in over time so that it is fully onboard at year 10, so we don't get it immediately, but we phase it in over time, then what does that do for the financial plan? So, that's what we'll show tonight. The fiscals basically have $7.8 million of gross revenue and $4.6 million in expenses, and that's what results in the net fiscal impact of $3.1 million.
This is just related to the planning commission that is voting on the CIP this evening, are they going to have the same presentation?
They will. So, they're taking the CIP up last on their agenda, and Ms. Bower will be upstairs to discuss this with them.
Thank you.
So, tonight, we are planning to go, we have the presentation that we're planning to use on Wednesday night here that's available for us. Since you all have seen it twice, we're going to go through it really quickly, but then just really deal with these slides, so that that's really the point of discussion.
Could I just ask one question before we get into that? The 50% increase in projected pupils, is that a function of an expectation that people who'd move into these housing units would jam more kids into smaller units, or is that a function of some expectation that the market is not going to bring us small bedroom counts, and that we're going to have to take larger bedroom counts?
More the latter than the former.
Okay. So, if we were able to achieve, you know, acceptable market value in a ground lease, and stipulate that we wanted the unit count, the bedroom counts to be studios, one-bedrooms, one-bedroom's den, basically the Alvarez-Marcel model, the 50% bump-up would not necessarily apply.
That would be an over-projection of the pupil generation. So, with the model played.
Can I just ask one other question? I know we had in Dr. Noonan's package a list of the projected student growth. Do those projections include these new units from the development, or are they just based on what would occur organically within the city as it is today?
Do you want to speak to that, Dr. Noonan?
I'm presuming that it does not include the new units.
Okay. So...
I think it does include some. I don't know what the number is, but I can recall.
Because the projections are based partly upon past performance, so as they looked at how we have grown in the past, it has included mixed-use development, so there is some mixed-use development counted in there. It's not necessarily at the high school, it could be in other locations around town, but there is some mixed-use development that's counted in those projections.
Okay. I guess one of the things I want to make sure of is that when we look at these projection numbers, they show the largest growth occurring between '16 and '22. I'm presuming apartments in this, and in these 10 acres, would not come online until after '22, and yet, after '22, we're showing enrollment growth that's about half of what we're showing in the first six years, and I think that for modeling purposes, we need to be consistent here. I don't know what the right number is, but I, it does, seems like a disconnect to me.
Well, we had this discussion, if you may recall, we were talking about how big a high school to build, and what numbers were we going to include, what growth was to be included in the estimates for final build out of the high school. And I know we've had this discussion, I don't recall the exact numbers, but could somebody maybe take a look and see what numbers we plugged in? I think we said we're going to plug in, you know, three or four Mason Rose, or I remember something like that is what you said, Mr. Shields, and I thought there was some number that you were using from the high school, but maybe if, tonight, at the next meeting, we could try to revisit, make sure that our assumptions are still correct based on what might happen at the high school.
Okay. And so, the absolute numbers, what the model predicts is 101 additional students, and with the 50% increase, what we're modeling right now is 152 additional students that would come from the development on the campus.
So, the question would be, I'm sorry to interrupt.
So, then the question is, is that already built into there?
Yeah, so do we have to build a bigger high school to take care of the other 150 kids, or something else?
I think that might help answer my last question, I hope, which is, the difference in fiscal impact of 101 to 152 is 50 kids, 50 kids, each kid $16,000, so, you know, you're talking about half a million dollars at least of additional costs that you're factoring in if you use the more, the larger number. And that's relevant, just as I look at the cents on the tax rate that you're projecting, it would have, you know, an effect of reducing, if you've got a six, it would be four and a half or five, probably.
And the caution that we have to give is that this economic development is, at best, three years out, and going to come online at best, like six years out, and so for us to be super-precise on these projections is just not reasonable. But we can try to use the best tools that we have, and that's what we've tried to do.
And nor does it take into account that we could do a special tax district there, and get 15 cents. If we were at a Tyson's, the first thing we'd be talking about is, what's the metro bump-up? What's the, you know, we're so special, where Tyson's bump-up, you know, and, you know, you're talking 10 or 15 cents just for the privilege of being around Tyson's corner. We should, we could have that discussion, too. We won't right now, but we could.
I guess this would also, if I could just editorialize just for a moment, the idea of guardrails was set forth to really try to help shape what goes up there, so that, for example, the market may want a sea of apartments, it may want thousands of apartments, but that could impact our school, and whether we can build the right-sized school, and have to build all our other schools. So, the real thought of guardrails was to make sure that we have the appropriate mix of uses, and, for example, the market may not want to give us a hotel or office, but the guardrails may help us shape the project as something we think is best for the long-term interests of the city, including taxes that may be very accretive to uses other than apartments, such as hotels or office, or things that the market may not want to bring us in the way we want them to be brought, such as entertainment or sports complex, things like that. So, anyway, I think, I personally think there is a strong role for city council in the city in deciding and shaping what goes up there, and I think this discussion we're having right now is part of that. So, anyway, but why don't you go on with your presentation, Mr. Shields?
Okay.
Can I just ask some assumption questions first, before we jump in and make sure I'm looking at this correctly? Are we using the in-house fiscal model, or did Alvarez-Marcel have a separate tax yield model?
We're using the city's fiscal impact model that was built by Tischler-Bice.
Okay. And how does this 10-year phasing compare to what we actually see when new mixed-use developments come online?
Well, there's, we'll have a chart here that shows our assumptions on phasing, so let's have that discussion with the numbers up in front of us. Can I answer a question you didn't ask, though, which is, how does this compare to mixed-use development that we've actually had in the city? And so, if you'll recall from the chart that was just produced two weeks ago, the median fiscal impact on a per-acre basis is $307,000 for the projects that have been built so far. That's our actual experience, that's what the market has delivered, and that pencils out to essentially what we're expecting up there. So, that's a, we, and so, if you note the fact that on this, on the campus, we are anticipating that we will probably have higher density than the mixed-use projects that have been proved today, and per the guardrails that the mayor was discussing, we will also likely be pushing for higher commercial ratios, because we control the land and we have more control over what gets built there. And so, that 300-an acre arguably is a conservative net fiscal impact. And then, one other pretty conservative thing is that we're saying $300,000 in today's dollars, but it's not going to come online for 10 years, but we're just holding it at today's dollars. So, that's another thing to be aware of in terms of the assumptions.
Thank you.
I'm leaving, Mayor, and member of the council. So, I'll sweep right to the meat of the discussion here, reflecting the impact to the, thank you, reflecting the fiscal impact based on the full CIP and the modified CIP. You may recall, we saw the full CIP debt service, including all the CIP projects and the five-year CIP, and the TJ, which is not in the five-year, and graphed that, and the assumptions going with that. So, this chart in front of you, Slide 10, shows the impact of that full CIP debt issuance on median homeowner with an average house price of $700,000, and it was expected to be somewhere between nine cents and 13 cents without tax yield. And looking at the assumptions, and maybe this is the place city manager wants to discuss some of the other things, we are proposing a 10-year phase into a full amount of roughly $3.2 million. First four years, as mentioned before, after the fiscal year '22, when we realized the land sale proceeds would just be the assessment. land sale proceeds would just be the assessment on the land and phasing 25, 50, and 75%, and then in 200% all the way in the next eight years, from 25 all the way to 31, so six years, phasing that in. So revising the other chart to include the tax yield, to show the, I'll just briefly go over a little bit again. So the blue line is the impact on a median homeowner payment without the land sales, realizing no land sales. So essentially, that means, starting next March, there's a requirement of a 13-cent increase, which is about $900 on an average bill. Say that again?
Land sale means ground lease, too?
Right, that means that there's no economic development, there's no land transaction at all is the blue line. That's what the CIP costs, playing it straight.
I think what he's talking about is in a ground lease, you'd recognize or realize essentially the same tax revenue. We would do some sort of payment in lieu of taxes, is that right? We'd set up some kind of mechanism to capture the property taxes that they should be paying or would be paying if they actually had the fee?
That's correct.
People in the community, you know, they don't want to sell the land. And when I tell them, well, we're not going to sell the land, we're going to ground lease the land, makes them feel better. So when we say land sale, I would prefer that we say land sale slash ground lease.
Agreed.
Thank you.
So just going, flipping back, and you have your handouts flipping back, this blue line doesn't change because since it accounts for no lands lease, sale slash ground lease. So the red line is, reflects 40 million in land sales slash ground lease. It'll just become a mouthful for me.
Land transaction.
Land transactions, okay.
Well, if I could interrupt, if I could interrupt the discussion, I know you're having a great deal of fun talking about land lease and all that stuff, but, you know, there's nothing certain here. And to use Councilmember Oliver's words last time, it adds to the scale of ambition when we call this land lease. There's no guarantee that anyone wants a land lease. This is not Hong Kong. People buy land in Northern Virginia, end of story. So I don't care what you call this.
But that's not what Alvarez-Marcel has told us, I mean, right? I mean, they've told us that the equivalent, I mean, I'm not-
They're not buying the land, Councilmember.
I'm paying attention to what, you know, consultants we've hired are telling us. They could be wrong, I suppose, but I'm not making this up.
I think you're exaggerating the import of what they said in an attempt to agree with you so they could move on with their presentation.
So as you will notice, comparing the two graphs, it drops, the impact drops roughly $200 per property, per parcel, I should say, which is roughly three cents, from nine cents to six cents effective next year, if we were to account for the three, a little over the 3 million in tax yield phased approach on that one. So here, here's how that compares. And, yes?
Sorry. So even though the tax yield doesn't kick in until 2025, that tax increase would be reduced starting in 2019?
Because they're taxing them just on the land.
Yeah, you're using your 10 million reserve.
Because the reserve, okay, yes.
But let me ask you, so are you assuming that this is phased in like a straight-line fashion or are you assuming nothing for 10 years and then in 10 years you get the tax benefit?
We can go back to that slide. So, so the assumption is we get a benefit from raw land of 540 per year-
Got it.
-until construction starts. So then we have phase one, that's one quarter of it's built, phase two, half of it's built, phase three, three-quarters of it's built, and then in year 2031, it's all built.
Got it.
So then, if you look at the graph for the median homeowner with tax yield and without tax yield, you're dropping that down because you're assuming that you're going to be able to replenish your reserves sooner, correct? So you're just sort of taking all of the reserves upfront, and if there's any delay on the lease or sale of the land or the development of the land beyond the raw land phase, all of these numbers are, you know, at risk.
I don't think that's accurate.
The risk factors remain because you're relying on the timeline that we are being provided right now, and it can, it can vary going forward.
Well, I was going to add, the way, and Ms. Bawa's been running the model, not me, but what my observation was is because we have additional revenue coming online, there's less reliance on reserves. And so the tax change is, I think, you know, in the early years, you're correct, we can rely more on the reserves because we are building them, starting in either year '22 with that, that $500,000 payment. That, that is actually important in terms of how we draw down the reserves. You're right.
Yeah. And then-
Before we proceed, so this is probably a good point to ask this question here, as for the school board as well. I heard earlier that you were planning to issue the RFQ, RFP this fall, and November is probably something more than just a coincidence. So back to the earlier question, that if, that if the advisory referendum is not passed, for whatever reason, and there's a strong likelihood that people will vote against it, not because they're not in favor of building new school, they just are reluctant to proceed without something more than just a high-level strategy. So the question is, how would you contract for architectural services if the bond is not passed? Would this come out of reserves? Would you come back to the city, ask for more money? Or how, do you have the money now?
I guess I'm not quite sure I understand the question. I'm not sure I would contract for architectural services if the bond didn't pass.
So you're not doing an RFQ, request for qualifications, prior to, but the RFP, the proposals wouldn't be due till after the referendum or they wouldn't be issued?
Correct, correct. So the RFQ would be the only thing prior to.
Okay, thank you.
I had some questions on the timing, to make sure I'm understanding this. So we're saying an FY '22 is when we start getting tax yield. And so that's when, when I look at the comparison of the top and bottom charts, the bottom one without tax yield is three cents higher, as Ms. Bawa said. I'm confused why we can start counting on that tax yield for the first three years between FY 2019 and 2022, if we don't expect any money from real estate taxes until 2022. Does that make sense? Do you see the difference at six cents versus nine cents from the outset? Are we saying that we're just going to raise the tax rate less because we anticipate getting that tax yield later on?
You're taking the reserves, right?
You are drawing down on your reserves immediately.
You're drawing on reserves faster-
Faster than in the other model. And by the time, your 10th or 11th year, by the time you're fully phased in 100%, you're relying on your reserves, not at all. I mean, you're just relying on your tax yield.
When is that point? When do we start not needing to be relying on reserves?
If I recall, it's somewhere around 31, 32.
It depends on how fast you spend the reserves.
It's different from the top and bottom chart, obviously. Like you, we're going through it faster, obviously, in the one where, with the tax yield, because we expect the tax yield to kick in.
Sooner, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Earlier, you said this would happen, the inflection point would happen at the nine-cent mark. So are you changing that? Or am I misunderstanding what you said earlier? You said 31, 32 just now, but it seems here it's 29, 30. What am I not seeing?
So-
I'm not sure you understand the question.
You're talking about the top, the top chart, the blue, where it drops dramatically from, I don't know, 16 cents to nine cents?
Right, this is what I recall, that either you or the city manager said that at year 10, you would, the assumption is you would realize the full $3.1 million return in FY.
Yeah, it's more 34.
Well, you're looking at the blue line, and so there's no economic development or any land transactions on the blue line. So what's happening there is, I think, old debt, old debt's coming off of our books.
Yeah, exactly. Mature, the old debt maturing.
Oh, okay, so, so it would be the, the first instance of that would be 21, 22, where the first set of bonds defies the blue line. And the second would be in 30. And there's, there are no other maturation points that we're aware of at this point.
So the, the old debt, the current debt, that matures out around 34, 35 completely, but the bigger drop is in the late 30s, I mean, the late 20s and the early 30s.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions before we move on to?
Keep on going.
So, looking for the similar impact on the modified CIP. So here's the graph of the modified CIP debt service, if you recall, adding on projects and with a different time approach, aligning more with the realization of the land sale proceeds and delaying certain CIP projects that are in the five-year CIP now to out years. The assumptions remain the same as were discussed prior. And this is the chart that you have seen before, this tax impact without the tax, tax yield. Somewhere between seven cents to four cents, about roughly around $500 to $300 impact. And we also looked at the yellow line showing the buy-down debt option, which has a greater impact in now years and a lesser impact in the outer years, so, versus the red line, which is the buying-down debt service, which has kind of a gradual impact over the years. So here is the chart on your handout, the top one, and the one with the modified CIP. With the tax yield, the blue line remaining the same with no land sale proceeds, no economic development on that land. And the red line showing the impact of the land sale proceeds, including the 3 million in tax yield with a phased approach. It drops down from four cents to three cents here in first few years, and then more aligns at two cents in the future years, a two-cent increase for the modified CIP.
So is now a good time to ask my question again about how this 10-year phasing of when we see tax yield compared to actual projects we've had come online? Seems kind of conservative, but-
We've heard, with, with all of our discussions with developers, we've heard different things. We've heard some developers say that they think it would be more comfortable for a developer to take down two-acre chunks of it at a time and not try to develop the whole project at once. We've had other developers say, ah, 10 acres, that could easily be done at once. So there is a difference of view. We've taken the approach that, that it would be phased in four different bites. So in terms of each, each phase, that lines up pretty closely with what the city's experience has been of three years of construction following approvals. And it's, it's probably not a perfect mirroring, but we think it's fairly close.
And then about three to four years before you get, per, I guess, development box, I guess, before you get fully leased out and generating money?
Stabilized, that's right.
And that compares well to how we've seen actual projects so far?
Yes, I mean, we've seen with, for instance, the most recent projects, that they're not yet stabilized. They are fairly close to fully leased up, but not yet fully leased up. So their fiscal impact is still improving each year. And, and we think probably in the next, probably two to three years from now is when they'll be stabilized.
Separate question, it's not related to tax yield, but is more about the buying-down debt versus buying-down debt service discussion? I think we started last time. Do you have a sense of what the overall difference in, I guess, interest essentially that we're paying between the two versions? Because obviously, buying down debt service is easier in the short term for us, right? But obviously, we're paying more debt service in the long term? Do you have a comparison of what, for the life of that 30-year bond, what are the differences in terms of the debt service that we're paying for the two versions?
I don't have the full details, but talking to the financial advisors, they've kind of raised us up for somewhere between 25 to 50 basis points. But that's like, on an annual basis, not the life of the bond. So that would have to be something we'd have to bring back to you.
And is the bond structured in a way where you could be on one version, where you're buying down debt service, but then as you get land proceeds, land transaction money, whether it's a lease or a sale come in, you then pay down the principal, like a mortgage, where you could kind of pay down your principal if you come into a certain amount of money? And then that essentially reduces the amount that you have to be-
I think this, that line is what you've just described, is kind of that mortgage-
That's the yellow line.
So we issue a bond initially with the provision that we could have a call-in the first seven years, so whenever we get the proceeds. And since we're issuing in tranches, we could pay down more on the first one and the second one as it goes along.
And you're saying that to have that, that's the 25 basis points more in-
That's what Joe Mason had said the last time he was here, yeah.
I think 25 to 50.
25, 50 basis points to have that structure.
Right.
But we don't have the sense of how much less debt service we'd be paying over the total life of that bond to compare whether that makes it worth it, right? Because that's essentially the math that you would do, it says-
Basically, what's the cost of the loan under both scenarios? The total interest and other financing costs.
Sure.
We could just do, what is a million dollars? And then just make interest rate assumptions, like three and a half to four and a half percent or whatever the projected interest rates are going to be, times 30 years compounded. That'll give you an idea of what the benefit of prepayment would be.
I forgot to ask about the interest rate assumptions for all of this, still what they've been?
Yes, we haven't changed that. Three and a half percent in first issuance, 4% in the second, and four and a half in the last one.
So for purposes of tonight's discussion, we also, we need to be preparing, comparing the full CIP with the modified CIP to see which is the one that we're the most comfortable with, that we want to jump in the pool with.
Yes.
And what, do you have any thoughts on those comparisons?
So what I would like to just highlight, and I think we have done enough discussion about it, is that between the red line and the blue line is the risk, the various risks that lie, the dependency, the reliance on the land sale proceeds, heavy reliance on the land sale proceeds, any timing in the economic factors, market factors, or any delay in the agreements or whatever, that's the realm we are floating in. So going with the modified CIP, addressing the tax yield, reflecting the tax yield, you're looking at a three-cent increase in next March versus a seven cents. But at that point, the land sale proceeds are not clear, so the impact would be greater in the future years when we find out if it is happening or not happening, or getting delayed, or whatever the case may be.
Mr. Duncan?
Okay, so can I turn back to the full CIP page? Because that's obviously the one that I want to focus on. And I want to make sure you have plenty of time to go upstairs and explain this to Planning Commission, too.
We're still following the Planning Commission.
Yes, I know. I'm watching you, Cindy. If you walk away from the door, then I become more concerned. As long as you're here, I'm feeling like I can still ask a question, which is, so to explain this chart, I'm holding this chart up to my next-door neighbor, and I'm saying the blue chart, the blue line here means that, you know, winter came and it just didn't work out for us. You know, we voted for the school, and nobody wanted the land, and nobody wanted development. And so we're having to pay for the whole shebang.
Correct.
End of story. The red line is the line based on the assumptions that you've shared with us tonight about pupil count, which is 150, interest rates, which are a little higher than the current market, et cetera, et cetera. And your assumptions about 10-year-out money and all that. So that's the red line. And so then, my, and that's fine that we have both those lines, because either of those two scenarios is possible. But there's a third scenario that is sort of more aspirational and directed by, you know, people who know this business well and, you know, take advantage of those smarts to tell the market what it is that we hope for. And you can call it what you want, the Tartar line, the Tartar-Z line, I don't know what, but- But it is a line which says that the kid count's going to be, based on our current experience from several years, about 100, because we're going to insist on small units. The ground lease sale differential may exist, but isn't going to be tremendous. It includes the $10 million, all $10 million of the dollars in the water fund reserve plowed into this. And it includes, and I guess this is the part that makes it the Duncan line, too, it includes the possibility of a special tax district assessment of, you pick a number, you know, pick a number that is competitive regionally, you know, Alvarez-Marcel picks a number, a number that shows that this is a special place and we have high expectations. And, you know, it's sort of like universities that charge higher tuition and get more applicants. If, if we act like this is an important location and we price it accordingly with a special tax district assessment, then I personally believe that, you know, we will not scare, at minimum, we will not scare developers off. So if you factored all those assumptions in, what kind of line would you show? And my guess is that you would show a line that has a zero cent tax increase in, you know, pretty much all the years, because we would be gathering as much tax revenue as we would be expending to pay off the debt. So as we go into Wednesday's meeting, I would, I personally would like to see some kind of representation of that as one of the options, so that we aim high for this, you know, very important and valuable land.
Okay, other questions, comments? Ms. Hardy?
So is the blue line what we think is our stress case scenario?
That's correct.
That just assumes the land doesn't sell, right? Does it include like other bad things that could happen? Right? I mean, that's bad, but other bad things, too.
I would say that the Y-axis should not change. The pennies could change completely. So if there is a recession and a penny generates much less money because we've had a decrease in assessed value, then those pennies are going to be higher. But the impact that's shown on the Y-axis for the median homeowner is unchanged. That number doesn't change whether the economy is good or whether the economy is bad.
So can I ask you why we're putting pennies up there when the pennies can deceive people about the impact? Shouldn't we show the median homeowner dollars because that's a little bit more?
Well, we do show the median homeowner's dollars. That's what the graph is. Now, we've put the pennies in just because as a communication issue, people understand, actually, pretty much the people at this table really understand that. I'm not so sure that the public does. I think the public understands the Y-axis better. But in our jargon, we tend to distill it down to pennies on the tax rate.
And I think by putting the pennies in the center of the chart, you draw everybody's eyes to it, and pennies just don't sound that expensive. Dollars sound a little more expensive.
That's a presentation issue, okay.
So Mr. Z?
Actually, let me just quip that I think pennies sound pretty expensive to me, but beyond that, remind me again, what, what assumption you were making with regard to the, to the assessed value? Was it two and a half percent?
Two and a half percent.
Per year?
Per year, annually, yes. And that's why you see the two cent line is increasing. I mean, the dollar value doesn't remain the same.
God, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments on Vice Mayor Connolly?
Comparing the yellow line to the red line?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have to make that decision right now, right? That's a decision that can be made as we go forward. Or is that a decision that needs to be made as we look at the CIP?
We'd have to make that before we issue the bond, right? Because we'd have to pay the premium to get a defeesment option. So when you, it's kind of like getting a, you know, paying for a prepayment option. So that thing, I think we'd have to do, each tranche we, bonds we issue, at that time, we'd have to basically decide and pay a premium to say, we want the right to prepay this.
So we have?
That's correct.
About six months or a year to really nail that one down?
We'd have to do it on all the tranches, though. We could do it on some, but not all of them. So we could say, we're going to pick this one, the first one out.
First tranche would be next year, right?
It's this year. We'd issue it soon after the referendum.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that is the timeframe where we have to decide this yellow line?
That's right.
Okay, so I'm just going to set that aside in my mind, think about that a few months.
And just real quickly, that first tranche is, to Mr. Z's earlier point, that's to pay for A and E. And so we have modeled it at 15 million. And that's more than we need for A and E, but anyway, that's, that's what we're modeling.
Right.
Okay, other, Ms. Hardy?
So speaking of land sale proceeds, if I remember the discussion from Alvarez-Marcel correctly, they had suggested that we would get payments in two tranches, like an initial one in 2019 and then the balance kind of three years later. And here, I think we're being a little more conservative, thinking that it wouldn't happen until 2022. What does it look like if we did that version? And why did they suggest that version versus this version?
I can speak to that. The Alvarez and Marcel, you're absolutely right, said it would be possible for us to structure a deal where we get 10 million, two years or two and a half years in advance of them taking down the land. But they also said there'll be performance requirements placed on the city. And if the city doesn't meet those performance requirements, we may lose or need to give that money back. And I don't understand all of what that means. And so that, to my mind, was a really important inflection point in terms of risk. And so we have modeled the first payment coming at 22 as opposed to upfront. And so your question is, how does that change things? And do you, we did, we did run it with that 10 million upfront.
We did run it. It just smoothes it a bit. It doesn't drop the pennies a whole lot, I mean, the total dollar amount. It kind of just smoothes the chart more. There is some impact because it's a couple of years sooner. So if you see the drop is not going to be as far out, it'll be two years sooner. But since the total dollar value is not changing, it's, it's, the impact is just time-related more than the dollar-related.
Okay. So speaking of that drop on the modified CIP with tax yield, the drop from 21 to 22, I think last time we'd seen some, it was like a four cents to two cents drop. We had suggested, well, why not bring some CIP projects earlier in the schedule? Does this already include that?
Yes.
And we can do that and still drop the tax rate back down to two cents?
Yes, so this still assumes that we will be funding the library in '22, '23.
Does that mean we can get more things done than in 2022 and keep the tax rate at three cents?
You can do anything if you increase the tax rate.
Well, it would be keeping the tax rate, it wouldn't be increasing the tax rate. It'd be, if you already raised it to three cents, I think generally people don't expect their tax rate to go back down. And there's some things that on the CIP list, TJ, for example, land acquisition. So, you know, as we think about a land transaction of 10 acres up at the high school, I think it's important for us to think strategically about where we may need to buy land elsewhere in the city. And I want to have that option in these years and not be promising voters that your tax rate's going to go down, if we can't project that five years from now, anyway. So I'm just generally hesitant to show a three cent to two cent decrease, or even the, the yellow version when we're buying down debt, because it looks like a big promise that we're going to drop your tax rate down to six cents.
Well, but we do need, that's the point well taken. We're trying to show what it is we need in order to cover the debt service for the project. And so the chart is accurate in that. The, I think, you know, the, the real essence of the modified CIP, as we, as we've stated, is that everything depends upon the land, us executing the land transaction and everything moving on a schedule. And so we have proposed in the modified, moving $30 million of liabilities until the point that we know that that's going to happen. And that has, the worst-case scenario has a, a difference of 15 cents down to 11 cents. That's one way to look at it. The, but I think it's more than that. I think it's, it's really, this is a very unusual financing situation where we're relying on the performance of a third party to really make our whole financial plan work. And we're taking on extraordinary risk with that. We think we can manage it, because the big risk is the issuance of the bonds for the high school, and we cannot issue those until we have a master development in hand that we feel comfortable with. But there still will be that 25 month, or, you know, two and a half years where things could change and that master agreement could go south on it, on us. That's, that's really the, the era where we have some potential risk. And, but we can evaluate that more clearly with that agreement in hand. And so the modified CIP basically stands for the proposition of let's hold 30 million in liabilities and sort of hold back on that until we know where we are in that, in that FY '22 timeframe.
Set us up.
Sorry, so are you saying, then, that if we did not realize the land sale, we would further defer those projects?
Well, you'd have a tax rate decision to make that would be very clear. I mean, one of the difficulties is that we have a CIP that is really ambitious, as we all know, $168 million worth of capital needs, that is possible because we have a very well-thought-out, well-planned, but not yet executed, land transaction on which it all hinges. So if it doesn't happen, yes, I think the city council would make different decisions three years from now than you, you're making today. Yes, I think that's natural.
Could, I understand a little bit more about the performance measures. I kind of missed that. So the consultants actually projected that we would take the money, begin to take the money sooner, and because of anxiety about performance measures on the city, performance requirements on the city, we're modeling more conservatively than that. So what are we, what are those performance requirements? I mean, my perspective is some degree of expectation that we keep moving on this in terms of developing the site and, you know, having community engagement and getting on with the small area plan and so forth, that, that's a good thing. Because, you know, we're not doing this to just watch that land sit idle up there. Are there other, you know, risks involved beyond, you know, our failure to perform in the sense of, you know, reasonable consideration of, of a development program?
Well, I think the obvious performance measure would be you need to deliver a clean site in X number of months. And so that does put some pressure on the school construction program. It's, that's probably manageable. The other one that I think is maybe a little bit, and to tell the truth, I don't really know what all the performance measures would be. They'd have to be negotiated. But there could be some other ones of, suppose we have a conceptual entitlement plan at the time of the agreement on the master development. Other performance measures would be you must approve a site plan with these uses, with this mix of uses, et cetera, et cetera. You cannot renegotiate anything. I think there could be some hooks in that entitlement process, and that's not, I don't fully understand that. But that might be a difficult thing for the council to agree to right there at that point. So that's, that's another thing.
I mean, bottom line is, the sooner we want our money, the more discounted it's going to be from when the project comes online. And also, there's risk associated with that time. That's why it's said, whether you're going to get your entitlement, whether you're going to get jerked around in your entitlement, it could be environmental issues that could come up, utility issues, and there's all sorts of things that happen in land development. But the sooner they have to pay, they have carry costs on that for the period of time till they start getting money back in. And so it's going to be discounted. We could insist on everything on the day they sign the papers, we're just going to get less for it than if we spread it out more over time to match up when the income starts coming in for the developer.
I guess the reason that I'm asking, and, you know, obviously defer to your vast expertise in this area, is, again, in communicating this to the public, if, if the market is willing to put, you know, a big number of dollars on the table before they can get access to it, that communicates to, you know, the people that this is a real thing here, you know? This is, this is what we believe it is. It's a very valuable property. Anything less than that, you know, creates a certain amount of doubt, like, oh, I don't know if I vote for this, you know, we'll dink around a couple of years and nobody will put any money down for it, and where are we going to be then? So I guess my question would be, obviously, we don't want to hire hands, you know, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're negotiating a deal that the other party says, well, you guys got to decide this in 30 days, otherwise, you know, I get my money back or whatever. But, you know, we do want to, I think, get to the point where we can make a deal. And, you know, passing referendum is, is, you know, the essential first element of getting to the table to make any kind of deal.
Okay, so, Ms. Hardy?
Also, last time we asked whether this modeling assumes we're using all 10 million from reserves, or does it still hold some of the water sale proceeds in the capital reserve fund?
It assumes we are using all of the reserves and at some point, about a million or so, we drop down even less than a million in reserve at certain points in specific years.
Okay. And then I think this was also assuming, is it three debt tranches we're issuing for the high school?
15%, 45%, and 40%.
And so one of the questions I asked a couple of work sessions back is, would it help any of this if we spread that out further? So if school construction took another year and issued four debt tranches, does this help this picture look any better?
So this was done to align the timeline that we have received from the per-concealment now. The school construction is done by June 2021, so these are the three.
But if it helps this look better, we could always say, well, let's take four years to build the school instead of three years. Does that spread the cost out better for us?
I don't think so. It will make the school more expensive, it will make it bigger, that's, that's a difficult thing to do.
And then the interest rates is another variable, big variable in the future years, so.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
So if I'm looking at these graphs again, and I wanted to kind of highlight, where is the period of greatest risk? It's not all the way through the next 20 years. Where's the period, where is the dicey period? Is it 2021 to 2024?
But only because of how we're choosing to use the capital reserve in the early years. If you didn't choose to use the capital reserves then, or chose to use them in a different way, the greatest risk is upfront.
And also the fact that will we be building our reserve with the land sale proceeds? So that, that is, 22 is when you realize all of it, based on what Alvarez has.
So then the risk isn't up until 24, the risk ends around 22?
More so. And then realizing the tax yield, so there, there is a continued risk over there.
I make your risk is strong until the developer starts putting shovels in the ground and frankly, only starts delivering the first phase, that we, I would suspect, but.
Just want to think, go back to your assumptions, the yield per acre, based on current other experience in the city, is based on projects that are, you know, what, two, 2.5 FAR at most? So are we assuming the same kind of FAR in your red line model here? I mean, what if we went to, what if we said that our aspirations are to have, you know, 3.0 FAR?
The, the projects in the city that have performed at that 300-plus level have been 3.0 FAR.
3.0, so we'd have to go above 3.0, which means you'd have to go above roughly seven or eight stories. But if you went, if you, if you had an aspiration, again, to have a 12-story building up there, that would have an effect on the numbers.
So 301 West Broad is a 3.25 FAR, and that has net fiscal impact of $360.
That's Harris Teeter.
$60,000.
And it's roughly eight, nine stories. If somebody came to us and wanted to build a 15-story building up there, then that would obviously sweeten the numbers.
Yes, density is what drives both the value of the transaction and the tax yield.
And we're not, by, by putting these assumptions in, we're not, I hear you're guardrails, but we're not precluding getting a bid from somebody who would propose to do that, that we could then consider?
No, in the procurement, that would not be precluded.
Okay.
I don't think. I mean, we'll put guardrails, and that'll be a public process and deliberate process before we issue the RFP, what those guardrails are going to be. But- Before we issue the RFP, what those guardrails are going to be. But the discussion all the way has been not to limit, well, I shouldn't say that. But anyway, we, we're trying to drive value on the site. And we've been told that the market may not want to build densities that are that tall. And densities that are that tall could actually draw value down because of the risk associated with it. But, you know, those are all things that we can.
Discuss.
Yeah. And the way we've modeled these, we think are, are, in what Alvarez and Marcel has modeled, is something that is market tested. So it's not a stretch in terms of this program that's been laid out. We know the market is there for that type of program. When we have the guardrail discussion about pushing the market, that's where we'll try to do some more of that assessment as to, okay, well, what does that mean?
And again, just to set community expectations, because that's an important part of it, you know, we are kind of expecting that the FAR is going to be three or up. I mean, your models are based on a certain amount of density that is the kind of density that we have seen in the more recent projects in the last 15 years. You know, we're not talking about a development up there that's going to be three and four-story, you know, garden apartments or some sort of a suburban office complex. It's going to, this model relies on a degree of density that is what you have seen in town over the last 15 years at the newer, newer buildings.
Yes.
Okay.
I would just say, one thing of just of caution of what you just said, the projects, like the Harris Teeter project, didn't have as much infrastructure as might be required on these 10 acres. For example, you already have a road. You don't have to build your own roads. You don't, you may have to put in some things on top of the road or near the road, like the sidewalk, but you're not building the road. You're not installing, you know, maybe major sewer lines and things like that. So I think it's a bit of a wild card. And I think it's appropriate that staff be conservative in these numbers because we really haven't flushed out or sussed out all the variables associated with development on that site. I think it's safe to say that it's likely development will be as dense, if not possibly more dense than the development that's generally happened in the city, which is approximately 3.0 FAR. And there's a possibility, I think, for higher return, particularly if we steer the development away to more tax accretive uses, if the market's willing to do that. But all that sort of remains to be seen. So, well, if I could ask you, what was the ULI FAR? Was that 3.5 in the ULI?
It's slightly higher than what Alvarez and Marcel has. They had, I believe, 1.2 million square feet, and Alvarez and Marcel is just slightly below 1.1.
What was the FAR on the ULI?
I'll need to go back and check. 3.5 sounds familiar, but I, we'd need to go back and check.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any, Ms. Hardy?
I wanted to go back to the full versus modified CIP recommendation. So with the tax yield picture added back in, and while things look a little rosier with that, it sounds like it is still staff's recommendation to proceed with a modified CIP. And so it would be a $200 to $500 increase for the average tax, tax bill for the average homeowner versus a 400 to 900 or so difference. For, shifting gears to the town hall, I think two things that we'll probably need to be really clear about is the simplified assumptions behind this. So how many apartments does this mean? What sort of development could this be? So people can understand and really grasp, because when we look at this, people want to know, what does that mean though? Does it mean you're going to have that performing arts center I really want there? Or that sports complex? And you're saying, well, it's actually 800 multifamily units, 150 age-restricted units. It's maybe a hotel that's not a flagship or full service, but maybe, you know, midsize hotel. I think those things need to be really clear. Not just FAR assumptions, but whatever Alvarez Marcel put in there to explain to people that if you expect a tax rate increase of this and a tax bill impacted this, this is what it means. Obviously, you could change the program, and that means your tax rate would look different and your tax bill would look different. The other thing I think that's really important to be clear with people on is why the recommendation from modified versus full? So what is that risk that staff is recommending we not take on with the full CIP? In easy-to-understand terms.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on this phase of our discussion?
So where does this lead us now as it relates to Monday? What, what is the default? What are we going into the Wednesday public meeting telling the community that majority of the city council wants to do? A full CIP or modified CIP? Is this the appropriate time to ask that question?
I think so. Is that where you're going next in the discussion, Mr. Shields?
Yes. What the council approved on first reading was the full CIP. If, if there's, so we'd like direction tonight in terms of, of what documents you want prepared for you to act on or for you to consider acting on, on the 24th.
So, or as we get to that discussion, let me ask you about City Hall, and also just in general about this process, the high school process going forward and when information will be available and what we anticipate our schedule is going forward. Because I think that can inform what might be appropriate as far as CIP. So I guess, could you discuss the City Hall project and what you anticipate the schedule would be and the commitment of money would be going forward? And then maybe talk a little bit about when we'll be getting additional information with the process, with the economic side of the campus project? In other words, what would be your general schedule do you envision for the campus site as far as the economic side of things? Do you have any, you know, we're going to do this analysis, we'll expect to put out an RFQ, and are, do you have any even rough idea about how things might play out on the economic side?
For the campus site, so we've been discussing having an RFQ for the architect for the school, and that would be pre-referendum. We would be.
Let me ask you before you get on with that. So is there a cost associated with doing that?
For an RFQ?
Yeah. I mean, in other words, what kind of money are we talking about spending prior to the referendum getting passed? Sort of assuming that the referendum will get passed.
As I understand it, part of the RFQ process is under the scope of work that Arcadis is doing, Bob Jones specifically. So I, I don't know that there are going to be any additional costs for the development of that RFQ.
And the review of the RFQ would happen subsequent to the referendum? Or when would the RFQ, you know, information come back? Like, somebody going to analyze it and go through it all? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to sort of just question is, what kind of costs are we expecting taxpayers to pay prior to the referendum getting approved, assuming that the referendum's going to get approved? We sort of went through this with Matt Daniel, and that was a bit of a problem. And you don't have, if you don't know it now, I think it would just be helpful for people to know that we're not jumping the gun, or that you aren't jumping the gun as far as incurring costs until we know where the public's heading on this.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So anyway, maybe you could continue on what you think the schedule would be.
So on the economic development side, we have Alvarez and Marcel. Their additional deliverable is the strategic marketing roadmap. They will continue to work on that through the end of August. And then they basically are finished until post-referendum.
And what's the strategic roadmap going to be?
So the strategic roadmap lays out the sequence of steps of how we take the land to market post-referendum, if the referendum passes. And so it includes the entitlement phase, it includes a marketing phase, includes a roadshow of, to generate interest. Then it includes what we think would be a two-phase procurement process, probably an RFQ, or at least a request for conceptual proposals for price as well as a development program. And then we'd shortlist that into maybe three or four of the top-ranked people who respond to that first phase of the procurement to participate in the final phase of laying out a development program and offering a price for, for the land. That process would, we'd anticipate taking a year post-referendum. And then after that period, once we have a master development, developer in hand, at that point, we'll be getting close to the construction phase for the high school. And so that's really when, kind of the key points of, we would want to have a master development agreement in hand before we issue the bonds, the big bond issuance for the school project. That's, at a conceptual level, the next step.
Any questions on that? Connolly?
I may have missed the beginning. When's the small area plan? When is that completed? The zoning of the site?
So the small area plan is, Mr. Snyder is here. Our thought is, we probably wouldn't ask the council or the planning commission to take a formal action on the small area plan until after the referendum as well. But that's, but you all could change, direct differently on that. But in our latest discussions of scheduling, our thought is that that would be an appropriate sequence, to lay out what the small area plan has, so the public has that information, but to not formally adopt it until post-referendum.
So prior to the referendum, there'll be something for people to look at, but it wouldn't be an adopted small area plan?
That's right.
How far prior would that be ready?
Well, it's, it's.
We're, we're working hard on this. It's a work in progress. A lot going on here in the city.
I just think it's, if we expect people to vote for the referendum, they need to have something to look at, to understand.
We're, we're working on it presently. We hope to work on it over the summer and then, and early fall, and have a draft out there that would set the general parameters. Part of it is integrating all the various pieces. The school piece, we have kind of completed study on, from Nelson Nygaard, wrapping up the urban design piece. And so we're, we're integrating all of those. But it will be not as detailed as previous plans. I think it'll be more, generally, we want to focus particularly on the land use and zoning aspects, which we've previewed some of that with council, planning commission, and others, in terms of what would it take in terms of planning and zoning so that if the city was able to go forward, then have the proper land use tools in place to do whatever the council and school board, planning commission collectively decided was best, best approach.
I mean, it almost seems like your work should be really almost conceptual, because you don't, a developer comes in, is going to want to say, what is your plan? You know, what am I stepping into? And you don't really want a precluded developer coming up with something different or creative, or whatever it might be. And so having a plan that's fairly prescriptive probably wouldn't be a good idea. Would you agree?
Well, we have tried to keep it general, and you've seen some previews of this in some of the meetings that we've had with the public, where we've tried to integrate the school planning and develop, and create development blocks and corridors where utilities could take place, but also linking the school site with the development site and onto Hickok Road. So you've seen some of those sketches with the idea of a street grid and a promenade, creating appropriately-sized development blocks where whatever the appropriate development that wants to happen there is approved in the plan could take place. So we're trying to keep it conceptual.
But so if a developer came in with something totally different from what your street grid looks like, I mean, I guess that wouldn't be a problem, right? I mean, we're, it's really just kind of.
Well, we're not, we're not adopting formal streets. I mean, I think the concept here would be, these would be private streets. So we would, we would be looking to create a pattern that we think would make sense. Obviously, when you go out into the marketplace, it would need, need to be tested. I would think it's not inconsistent with some of the general planning that was done, for example, Pentagon City, where there were general development plans with, with target numbers and target mixes of uses. I think the key thing is having zoning and land use that lets you approve what the market may bring to you. And it might be a lot, or it might be less than, less than a lot. But having flexibility and also something that will not cause problems for the schools, because remember, 70% of the school site is going to be schools and public space. So we need a zoning and planning piece that recognizes that predominance of the site will be schools and open space and recreation.
Oliver?
So I'd like to say that the thing that council really needs to focus on right now is what direction do we want to give the city manager for Monday night? I mean, the discussion of the future planning efforts, that all presumes that we go forward with a decision on Monday night. So I'd like us to really focus right now on what it is that we want to do. Now, I've heard somebody say that the question is whether or not we're going to do the full CIP or the modified CIP. And we're being asked to have this discussion in the context of not yet knowing what the planning commission recommendation is. And I would, you know, I don't know what the planning commission recommendation is going to be. But I know that on a number of recent projects, they have taken the radical stance of saying, nope, you can't build the brand-new thing you want. That's what they did with the library. The library originally wanted a $20, $25 million brand-new library. And the planning commission said, no, we can't afford it. It's not practical. Come back with a renovation at $8 million. And that's what the library board did. They came back with a renovation at a lower cost. So I think that, you know, we, as a council, have three decisions to actually make. One is, are we prepared to commit the city to a $120 million project and put it on a referendum so that if the citizens approve it, it's going to go forward? And if we are, are we prepared to do it with the full CIP or the modified CIP? So those are the decisions that we really have to make. I know I'm the outlier here. I'm not committed to the $120 million high school. I think the risk is too high for the city. And although I voted for it at first season, first reading, it was only to bring the matter to a vote, that we could actually make a decision and not kick it down the road. So I, I look at, you know, the affordability question of the $120 million school. Are the taxpayers willing to pay that? Well, I think we have to give them good information, and I think we're getting there on the data that we give them. I think that there are still things that are a little too optimistic and perhaps not quite really making people aware of the impact. And the biggest concern I have on that front is the question of, if we're going to consider the tax yield, should we not take a look at the pressure on operational expenses? Dr. Noonan has told us that the, the schools have averaged 4%. Mr. Shields has told us that this model presumes that all other operating expenses stay at 2.5%. There's a disconnect there. And I think that we need to make sure taxpayers understand that, that 2.5% operating growth assumption may mislead the total burden that they get. So at the end of the day, if we put a $120 million referendum on the ballot, the taxpayers will tell us yes or no. So that risk is something that the referendum can address. The question of whether the lenders would be willing. I mean, we've shown some creative financing. We've showed a lot of really hard work. We've talked to a lot of experts. And I think, do I think that we could borrow the money? Yeah. I think we could probably borrow the money. And I think that we could limp along and, and manage to carry the debt. But I think the risk to the city is the inflexibility and the extent to which we tie the city's future plans and that we tie up future council's ability to make strategic investments in the city. We're committing everything we have, everything we have to this high school. There's, there's really not a whole lot of wiggle room left. Even under the most optimistic scenarios, it's about 10 years before we could even take a look at taking on any more debt. If the Womata pressures go up, if, you know, we have some other major issue within the city, if we need to build an elementary school sooner, we have very little wiggle room. And I'm, I'm really concerned about the, the risk to the city. And I, I just, myself, I can't approve any CIP that has a $120 million high school in it. I just, I think the risk is too high. So.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Hardy?
I was going to go next. So I do share a lot of the concerns with Ms. Oliver. I think what I said at our last vote is that I am concerned about the risk of the full CIP. I think it's, everything has to happen with the assumptions. There really is no room for error. We don't save a lot of debt capacity for other needs that may come up, whether there are costs that come up or opportunities that come up where we may want to acquire land or have some other things that come up that we may need money for. That said, having been involved in looking at all the options for the school, we had looked at 13, I believe it was, six months ago. And then we looked at five. And so we looked at many different ways to skin the cat. And it just, unfortunately, I wish we could have come out with a much cheaper option than 120. And I still have hopes that we can hopefully come down way below 120, which is why I always push on that. But it seems like the only viable option that made sense is to build a new school and free up the 10 acres. We looked at the renovation options. We looked at the do-nothing option. And all of those were just short-term fixes. The renovation options, I think the latest cost estimates had is coming in almost as much as $100 million or so. And you don't free up any of the land. And so it just seemed like a, a dead end for us. And so it is unfortunate a lot of those paths resulted in dead ends. But I do feel like, having been involved in all the details of looking at multiple options and different ways to kind of fund the future of the schools here, there wasn't a great one, other than build a new school. I do wish, again, that we will have further discussions and bringing that 120 down, because it really does max us out. That said, I feel like we just need to make some tough prioritization calls. I agree with staff's recommendations, and that's how I voted last time, that we. I agree with staff's recommendations, and that's how I voted last time, that we should proceed with the modified CIP and not take on everything all at once. And I think it's our job as people who were elected to make those tough prioritization calls. And I think when we look at the modified CIP, you know, there are opportunities to bring projects in earlier than we think. And so, I think it's important to keep that in mind, that we are not pushing things out forever or kicking hand down the road. I think really, it's a matter of prioritization and trying to choose, you know, which things we need to do first, and then doing other ones as the money comes in. I think it's a prudent way to proceed. So I would support the bond referendum for 120, but the modified CIP, which is how I voted last, two weeks ago.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
You sound so enthusiastic. I support the $120 million bond referendum and the full CIP. I will not say anything specific to it myself. I listened to our comments at our last meeting and didn't have time to transcribe everyone's. Everybody had good things to say, but I had time to do Mr. Snyder's. And I can't really improve on them, so it'll save everybody time if I just quickly go through what he said on the library. While I have ideas, Mr. Snyder said, about a better project than has been proposed, the fact of the matter is, the voters were given that information, they were given the costs, and they voted overwhelmingly in support of the library project. So while I might prefer a different project than I think would be better, the fact of the matter is, the voters have spoken. The library board has sought to carry out that view, so I do not favor delaying the library project. Mr. Snyder on the city hall, quote, "I believe there's a great sense of urgency about safety. We need only be reminded of what happened at Alexandria a couple of weeks ago. Courthouse violence is not unusual, and that simply has to be addressed more effectively in city hall than we are today. Never voted to slow down the city hall project, don't intend to start now. There are elements of this project that I personally don't like, and elements have been dropped that I should, would like to have in there." But the fact of the matter is, we have to move forward on the city hall project as well. And then finally, on the school bond, his quote is, "The schools have come forward with a proposal which is in the $120 million range. On the other hand, there are questions about affordability. I favor moving forward with the school project and delivering to the hands of the citizens with all deliberate speed and information the decision to decide whether we move forward on the school." So for all these reasons, I think he said, all these three projects need to move forward.
Can you ever quote me, Phil?
I was, if I'd had a little more time, I would look at you, shrewd character that you were, didn't show your card, so, you know, couldn't quote the mayor. Wanted to quote the vice mayor, but just ran out of time. Anyway, that's where I stand. I mean, I think I've said enough earlier on about, I mean, I respect my colleagues' views, of course, and who knows? I mean, we don't, we really, none of us know the kind of risk that we're undertaking here. I mean, I guess I've been in town long enough to, you know, have an expectation that, you know, we're, we're going to roll with whatever punches come our way. You know, winter will come, it'll probably come two or three times while we're working on this project. But, you know, we have the resilience and the assets and the imagination and, you know, the proximity to metro, in this case, for the school site, to, you know, do great things. And I'm haunted by the people who came before me, who've served and who said, if, if we had any failing, it was that we failed to dream big enough. You know, we took the value engineered option when we should have built, you know, what we knew in our hearts needed to be built. And, you know, while money's cheap, the economy is acceptably okay, I would like to go to the voters with, you know, a community-wide building program that is admittedly ambitious and meet the needs of this community for at least the next 20 years, which would free up, you know, community time and space to focus on the other things that we need to be concentrating on, which, you know, are not only economic development, also some of our social service needs. We spend a lot of time haggling over the city hall and the school and the library. And I would like this council, which is a very accomplished group of people, to be the council that bit the bullet and set a vision and, you know, got voter endorsement of it, I hope, and got the work done.
All right. And other thoughts? Anybody else have anything to say?
I wish Mr. Duncan had quoted me because I don't remember what I said last week. If you'd only written it down. Mr. Shields, you met with the library board recently and shared with them the thought that the, if the library project was to be put out a few years, it would not have to be five years, it could be two years. And what was the response of the library board to that?
I feel uncomfortable speaking for the library board, and I think they may weigh in in a formal way.
I think it'd involve pitchforks, too.
I did survive the meeting. I think when you walk through the full presentation that you all have seen twice, and we didn't walk through in a detailed way tonight, it's sobering. And I think they were sobered by it. That was my feeling of it, and that, but I think they need to speak for themselves in terms of their view of that.
And I think, I keep, as I look at this, sometimes I fall on the optimistic side with Mr. Duncan, and then on the sobering side. And I think, of course, we can do this. This is going to work. We have a plan, we have a vision, we've got a couple of years of risk, and it's going to work. And then I get a little nervous and think, oh, this isn't, we can't do all of this at once. So I think I'm just going to straddle the fence here and say, I don't know quite where I fall on this. It's, it's just, it's so overwhelming, and it's such a huge project. And I'm really appreciative of the work that has gone into this to explain it to us. And I want to make sure that whatever we decide, that the citizens understand it as well. Because as we talk about it, and the more I understand it, and I think I have my hands around it, then something else comes in, and I think, oh, I don't really have my hands around it. And there are so many people that are looking at this from so many different ways and different analyses going on. And I think it's really important that, that there's a clear decision and a clear point where we say, this is the best way to do this, and this is how we're doing it. I just, I'm not quite ready to say that. It's kind of wimpy, huh?
Anything, Mr. S?
Plenty. But I'm not going to say much about that tonight. I need, I need until next Monday to fully clarify my own internal thinking on this. And I think we all know kind of what the issues are. Some people call this an idea whose time has come, and, and there's, has been a lot of examination on this, so we've had two board attempts already to get to this point. I've spent a lot of time. And yet, we've promised the people advisory referendum admittedly that we would build a library, renovate the library. And now, we're saying, well, maybe the referendum was premature, you know? We were all council at that time. We could have said, we have the school coming along here. And now, it's not just one school, it's two schools, three schools, three schools. So that makes it existential, not just merely ambitious. It makes it existential, completely existential. Doesn't frighten me. I just look at the vulnerabilities and the risks, and I need a whole, I'm going to need a whole week to think about the V word and R word. But I will tell you this, that we can't go forward relying on just hope as a strategy because we just know that hope is a round object covered with big feathers, and that's all that is. As I say, hope is meaningless in terms of getting us to where we want to be. You can't just hope we get there. I want to ask questions tonight, simple ones, like, what happens if admittedly, we've been talking, you've been talking to developers, others, and you're very intimated that perhaps an off-taker for the complete site may not be a probability? So that means that people want smaller parcels, and that puts it back on us, basically, to do the streets, utilities, site improvements, all that stuff. And that's something we haven't talked about. I don't want to talk about that. I was just, I need the rest of the week to think about. We're going to come down on this issue, both with respect to the schools and then the CIP budget.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I, I've come down right now, sort of in the middle as well, and I know we'll get more clarity next week on Monday. But I think having the 10 acres for commercial development is really the way to go. I don't think there's any plan that works as well as freeing up 10 acres for commercial development. And I'm, I'm very hopeful about what we might do there. But I am concerned about undertaking all these different things essentially at the same time. I think it'd be very challenging in a lot of ways. And I guess what I would say is that I think we need to be open as new information becomes available, as things change, the marketplace changes, we need to be able to roll with the punches and not be wedded to, you know, quote a plan. And then we may need to modify things as time goes on, as we get additional information. The public may want to modify what we do on those 10 acres. And they may get modified in such a way that our tax yield is less than we have anticipated or thought it might be. And that may be a community decision we make, that we want to have something there for entertainment or for sports or some other use that makes the land less valuable to people. But it may be a decision we end up making anyway because that's a community value. And that can throw these charts totally out of whack. So I really feel like we need to do the best we can each step of the way, but not be so wedded to a five-year plan or a 10-year plan that we're not willing to make changes as new information and new things occur. So that's kind of where I am. I don't know how to necessarily articulate that into a particular vote or et cetera, but that's, that's generally my feelings on this. Unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to the next part of our discussion?
So can I just clarify? That means the city manager will have to bring two packages to the-
That's, that's what we will plan to do. And so, the ordinance itself, it has the chart in it of all the projects. And we could prepare one that is a modified and one that is the full CIP so that the council then could work through. Now, if there are variations on the theme, that is difficult to do from the dais because all the, all the numbers need to add up. And so, that's the only, only thing to think of is if, all right. But so, we will prepare the two, and that's, that's, I think, our takeaway from this meeting.
Another process question. So if the planning commission, which has not had the good fortune to listen to all of our sterling speeches, I don't know, doesn't decide anything or votes, you know, for the modified instead of the full, or the full instead of the modified, does that impose any kind of supermajority requirements on us to do anything? Or is this still just a simple majority vote, no matter what?
I believe, I believe that it's a, it would, this would not impose a supermajority. I think it's still you all voting on the CIP, just as you normally would.
Okay. And normally, when we have a budget and CIP discussion, they are, they travel separately. I've seen instances where people voted against a CIP and for a budget, or vice versa, since everybody else has offered their views about where they personally stand. I personally would not feel comfortable voting for a $120 million school bond unless it was accompanied by a full CIP. Because it's my belief that, you know, we need to argue this as a whole community activity this fall. And we're going to do a school, we're going to do a library, we're going to do city hall, we're going to do all the other things in the CIP. And if we're not going to do all those other things, then I think we're going to turn upon each other in a way that I don't really want to, you know, encourage that. So I guess I would have a question at some point about, are these things linked or are they separate?
So they're not formally linked. They, I think the sync sequence will be, however, CIP first, referendum second, unless there's direction otherwise. But I think that would be the natural order.
Okay. Anything else? Why don't we move on to the next item then? Does anyone want to take a five-minute break? We've got two. I'm sorry, Dan. Let's go for a five-minute break. Let's make it three. How do we split that? We'll take a three-minute break.
I did have a quick thing, though, Wyatt, before we move to transportation. Sorry. It's going to be quick, like, one minute. It's on the bond referendum ordinance. I just wanted to note that I did see the new warehouse clause in there that I think the city attorney worked on around, with our intention to develop the, up to 10.34 acres. And so, I wanted to make sure the rest of councils noted that that was a change from the last bond referendum ordinance. We had talked about it over email. That kind of signaled our intention to develop the land to help defray some of the costs, but doesn't really tie future councils' hands. I don't have it up.
What line is that? I think it, I think it's 131 or 133 or something like.
I was just going to say, thank you for adding that.
114 and 115.
So should we raise the in-the-city issue?
No, because-
That's been resolved.
All right. What do we got now?
Okay. As the council is aware, most of our transportation program is funded through grants. That's a good thing. But what it means is that our, what, what the grants that we're planning to apply for is really a key implementation step for us. So we wanted to just brief the council on, on those grants and make sure there's consensus on those, and then we will proceed. And Mr. Stoddard's going to walk us through that.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Charter and members of council. Before you tonight is an item, not for formal action, but rather for concurrence from the council. What's included in this, it's a staff memo as well as two attachments. I just want to hit some of the highlights in the memo. First off, the purpose of the item tonight, as Mr. Shields noted, is to get a review of what city staff is expecting to apply for in terms of transportation grants. So what's in front of you is a slate or a schedule of applications, and the schedule is designed to support the city council's adopted capital improvement program, CIP for FY '18 to '22. As I mentioned, no formal action is required at this time. Formal council actions will be sought later either as, as applications are submitted, as well as when revenues need to be recognized and added to the budget. Several years ago, city staff began a process developing not only funding needs, but also a delivery schedule for transportation projects. And that allows city staff to prioritize grant applications, leveraging of local dollars to access outside funds, and make sure that funds become available as they are needed for projects. The two attachments that are included in the package, the first labeled attachment one entitled "Application Needs," this is through the fiscal year '19 through '24 application process. Note that it's a longer process than the, than the adopted CIP. That's because several state funding programs now extend beyond that five-year window. So application needs are considered in advance beyond the five-year CIP. So that first attachment lays out the funding needs for the adopted program. The second attachment, attachment two, lays out staff's recommendations for how to meet those funding needs. So it lays out by calendar year, the applications that need to be submitted. In total, it's 19 applications for this year. That's a larger number of applications than in previous years. The major driver for that is that several state funding programs have been switching to every other year applications, some that the city goes after every year. For example, the revenue sharing program, which is a 50-50 match, used to be applied for every other year, now it's every other. So you'll see that there are a number of applications supporting out-year applications. The applications, as I mentioned, a total of 19 applications, 14 meeting CIP programming needs, three supporting planning support, one expanding transportation options available under the I-66 project, and then one for a typical operating fund that is available, operating opportunity for street paving and reconstruction. In total, we are looking at a, an additional commitment of $2 million over this, over this period of either local funds or state grant funds through the NVTA 30% program. And that would be used to leverage approximately $9.2 million of outside funds. So we're looking at a match rate of somewhere between four and a half to nine, depending on how that $2 million breaks down, between either local CNI, commercial and industrial equivalent funds, or NVTA 30% funds. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them either about the, the approach or the specific applications.
Questions? Ice Mary Connolly?
This is more than usual.
In terms of the number of applications, yes.
Are they new programs that we have not applied to in the past? Are they some programs that we're asking for more from?
These are programs we've utilized in the past. Some of them were new last year, but we've now been successful in all of these except for the recreational trails program. We're still trying to figure that one out. All of these grant applications come with some sort of scoring methodology or rubric, and we're looking at what makes a stronger application and how do we get it through. for the recreational trails program. We're still trying to figure that one out. All of these grant applications come with some sort of scoring methodology or rubric, and we're looking at what makes a stronger application, and how do we get it through?
Mr. Stoddard, this is a very impressive assembly of projects. Question for you and the city manager, gather enough resources to the extent that this
gets realized on the schedule to execute and implement?
Yes. So one of the things that city staff... So the short answer is yes. The longer answer is that as part of adopting the CIP, one of the things that's done is not only a financial analysis, but also a workload analysis. And the director of the Department of Public Works, as well as the deputy city manager, both believe that there are sufficient resources, either on staff or through our consultant resources, to deliver these things on schedule.
Very good. Thank you.
So if you were to get these different... I guess they're grants, but fair amount have a local match, would the CIP that we're considering or contemplating cover every one of these, or just some of them?
All of these funds would be covered through the programmed CIP. One of the things that's included in the CIP is a use of what's called commercial and industrial overlay equivalent funds. That is, by state code, jurisdictions are enabled to charge an additional 12 and 1/2 cents tax on commercial and industrial properties. The city does not go that route. Instead, it finds an optional, an alternative way of funding those things. Once that is the key to unlocking all of these grant dollars, because those CNI funds unlock NVTA 30% funds, which are essentially at a one-to-one match, the way the numbers work out, all of those are then used to leverage other grant opportunities. So even at revenue sharing, which is a one-to-one match, that becomes a four-to-one. And then the transportation alternatives program, which is a four-to-one match, becomes an eight-to-one match. And so that has been identified as a priority for the city and the budget, and that has been programmed for the last year, the last several years.
So I didn't think we had that ten...
What we have is money built into the basic tax rate for transportation projects, and really what it is, is money for WAMADA. And so we use their contributions to WAMADA to count as our CNI equivalent that we then use to apply for all these grants. So if we weren't spending all that money on WAMADA, though, we would still be using it on transportation, at least notionally, and we'd be even doing more leveraging. So I'm not saying that spending the money on WAMADA is in of itself a wonderful... Well, at any rate, we're trying to take advantage of that required spending to leverage grants.
So you're not assuming we're going to impose that commercial...
No. And we have come to a point where the way that the rules have been promulgated, there's more flexibility with CNI equivalent funds than there is for CNI funds. So we have found that we don't think it would serve the city's interests to actually adopt that commercial overlay tax, the way that the definitions have been promulgated at the NVTA.
Ms. Sordi?
So one thing I didn't see on the grant list is money for traffic calming. We talked about kind of bundling up maybe traffic calming requests in the out-years and getting grants for that. Is that something that we're still thinking of doing?
That grant was successfully submitted, actually, last year, and so there will be $600,000 available to the NTC program. And I could confirm the start year. I'd have to look back in the in-last-year CIP. I believe it's either FY '19 or FY '20, when that $600,000 in grant funds becomes available. That's on top of the money that council appropriated during last year's budget. The strategy, as part of that $600,000 in application funds, is to use light solutions in the interim, and then allow for a collection of heavier solutions, speed humps, curb extensions, to be implemented at one time. We think that that's a more efficient use of staff resources, as well as procurement of federal funds.
So that's great news. We got $600,000?
Correct.
Is that required matching, or...
There is no required match for that program. We understand that that's not a program that a lot of other jurisdictions are applying to currently, so that is a great opportunity. We're planning to reuse that same application vein, this time to do some work around Berman Park for pedestrian safety. If successful, we could look at this as an opportunity, perhaps, for sidewalk projects or continued funding of neighborhood traffic calming.
Yeah, it'd be great to get caught up on the NTC program. I feel like people seem to think there's a long queue to get work done there. So if we can get some light solutions done faster, now that we have $600,000 coming in next year, on top of the $200 from last year, I think that would be great. The other is, what can council or the public do to support these grant requests?
I think one of the things we can look at is that as these applications are brought forward, you'll see a lot of these show up on the council's consent agenda. Obviously, adopting the consent agenda is the first step, or adopting the approving of the applications. I think as these things come forward, either talking with the CACT, getting letters of commitment and support from the CACT, especially for some of these grants that are more competitive, for example, Transportation Alternatives Program, or SmartScale, or the NVTA, Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, 70% funds, comments from the public do have an effect that when you have... We saw this with the city's bike share application. When you have 100 comments sent in in support of a project, and you're seeing other projects dribble in with maybe five, six, seven comments in support, that 100 comments matter. So organizing, letter-writing campaigns, public speaking campaigns, occupying time at those public hearings, all those things matter.
But the SmartGrowth Alliance, do we like working... Because I know, I think they got some of the... The support came from them, and also some of the Washington-area bike, WABA, I think is the acronym. But are we... Do we work at all with them to try to get support?
Specific to the bike share application, we'd had communications from the Coalition for Smarter Growth, the Fairfax Alliance for Better Biking, the Washington Area Bicycleist Association, Greater Greater Washington. They've all been advocates of multimodal transportation. They'd reached out to the city for information on what kinds of projects are happening. In response to those, city staff did reach out, let them know that the applications were there for consideration. They did reach out to their memberships, and that's how those hundreds of comments did come in, so...
Yeah. I mean, it'd be great, for example, that SmartScale application, I think is really pretty exciting. If we could get... What's the chances of getting that, do you think?
I think they're high, that the city's had a 100% success rate on SmartScale applications. The first year of the program was in effect. SmartScale is a statewide program that assesses projects for its cost-effectiveness against transportation needs, economic development needs, environmental needs, public safety needs. The first year, the city applied for two projects, and in the entire Northern Virginia region, the city's projects scored number one and number three for cost-effectiveness. The next year, the next time the application window was open, we applied, and I think we won numbers two and five. So we are in the top tier when it comes to being competitive. One of the reasons for that is that those applications are being scored against economic competitiveness. The ongoing applications for land use and redevelopment in the city's revitalization districts are critical to those scores, that that is where a bulk of the city's cost-effectiveness is coming from, showing that transportation dollars are being connected to land use and economic development dollars. That is a very compelling argument at the state and regional level.
Good. That's... I'd love to see that SmartScale utility undergrounding on Park Avenue and some streets gain improvements. A great streets idea. Any other questions on this? If she move on, Ms. Oliver?
Sorry. This is just a technical question. The staff report says that Attachment 2 includes 19 applications for this year. Is that for this calendar year, or this fiscal year?
So year here refers to fiscal year. So what typically happens for most grant applications is the application window sometime opens up sometime in the fall or early, I guess, late winter. And so when we say this year, what we really mean is this fiscal year, this round of applications, starting in August, and then really carrying through to March, and then there's a planning grant in May. But otherwise, it's that set of... That's that cycle of months, that August-through-March cycle.
Mr. Duncan?
Sorry. I just... At some point, it's not important, but if... We could maybe number these applications, because I can't tell how you got to 19. I either get a smaller number or a bigger number.
Sure. Just to clarify the item before council, the second column from the right is titled "Application Year." The application schedule looks at all of the funding needs throughout the five-year cycle of the city's CIP. There are some programs for which city staff proposes applying as soon as possible, and those are for the very competitive grants, or the ones that program funds up to six years in advance. There are some programs where funding is available more on an as-needed basis, so there are more lines than the city's applying for. If the application year is listed as FY '18, the city proposes applying in this round of applications. If it's FY '19, or FY '20, or later, the city proposes holding on that application until a more appropriate time.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I shared this with Stoddard this afternoon when I saw him at the library, but I'd just like publicly to commend the staff, Jeff and Stephanie, for their facilitating work last Thursday, was it? At the neighbors' meeting, folks from Lincoln Avenue and Northwest Street, very well attended here, you know, 25 or 30 people, I think, probably. Maps were set out of each street on the tables, and, you know, it was really a great working session. Two things about that I asked, how'd you get so many people here? And the answer was, they had delegates on each street who were kind of the town criers, and they spread the news to their neighbors. So in answer to the question, you know, how do we get people to come out to meetings, I think one of the most effective ways is to have your neighbor tell you, you need to be there, because something important's happening. So lesson learned there. Second, there was, and I'm not going to get into the details, because I don't know them, there was something that the Lincoln Avenue people went away very satisfied with what we've mapped out there. The Northwest Street people had some issues, and they stuck around, and we talked in great detail about their traffic calming needs, and you and I talked about that this afternoon some. But there was a question that arose about, if something needed to be done, a budget amendment would be required to make that... To make money available to do that. And it was said by staff that that budget amendment, you know, couldn't be done this summer, it would have to be done in the fall. And the problem with that was, you know, school starts, right? And we're trying to get these things done before school starts. So I just wanted to say, you know, if there's something that could be done before school starts that needs money, you know, is there some way that we could make that happen? We still have at least two more meetings, right? We've got next Monday, and two weeks after that, to do a budget amendment, to get something done before school starts.
Yeah. To the last question, I can circle around with the staff that were at the meeting and ask where they were coming from with that idea of budget amendment, and take another look at the program budget. Certainly, that's something we'd want to make sure that the money is... The funding is in place for these projects. Certainly, the expectation, and this is something actually that council member Z started several years ago with Parker Kent, that you have to get something in before the first day of school. And that's actually what motivated this whole idea of light solutions, something that can be done quickly. That's paid a lot of dividends. It allows us to test-fit these programs and these ideas. It allows people to get used to them before the concrete is poured. There's an opportunity for dialogue. So that is the expectation I'll circle around with staff members. Just on that note, I do want to give credit that as the city has become more sophisticated in applying for grants, and the need for workload has increased, you've seen a growing sophistication of the city's staff team. It shows in the meeting last Thursday. The city has brought on experts in traffic calming, parking, transportation engineering, as well as grants, and you can see the number of names increasing on these staff reports, since that as the city's resources are growing, sophistication and expertise is also growing.
Great. Thanks. Unless there's anything else, why don't we move on? Thank you very much for coming out and your good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Let's move on to the last substantive item, which is the Broad and Washington project. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter and members of council. We've distributed a list of improvements for the Washington Broad project, and this is not meant to be an exhaustive list, it's meant to be a high-level list, and to help guide me and staff in our work with the developer. And as the council will recall, there was a discussion of September coming back for the council to reconsider the application at Washington Broad. So the big areas are fiscal impact, to essentially increase the fiscal impact for the project through a variety of means, clarify and sharpen the retail plan, so that it's clear what the city would be getting there, both for fiscal impact, but also for service... For what types of amenities that would be coming to the community. The Lawton Street transition, to continue to work on resolving the issues that the neighbors have raised with that transition. The environmental issues, architectural issues, and parking issues. And so can take any questions on these, but this is sort of an overview. I did get some comments from council on this over the weekend, and hopefully, this is aligned with the council's expectations.
Questions? Comments?
Sir, are we saying that we don't want this project to come back to first reading until all these items are touched?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know. My personal expectation, we make pretty doggone good progress. I don't... I have to have every point personally to be met, but I think some substantive, substantial progress in these issues would be my expectation.
How are we measuring substantive process?
I don't know. I think everybody has to measure it on their own. I'm not sure if there's a one-size-fits-all. I imagine some of us have different priorities than others. I don't know. I don't have a great answer for you, but, you know, as the Supreme Court justice said, I know it when I see it.
That's right.
Well, council member Oliver, I recall that the applicant... I certainly heard the applicant say that, "I would like a comprehensive list of all the issues that we need to address." So I wouldn't be surprised if he did not address all these things, because, you know, they fit in comfortable containers. For example, the... Some of these things are kind of philosophical. I mean, the reason I landed on condos above the office towers, because it's, you know, concrete, you can add more floors to it. But really, the underlying concern is that you need a higher fiscal impact breaker. And so that's something they have 45 days to address. I mean, that would be my line of inquiry with respect to what they need to do to improve it. You know, certain things are probably a lot easier. Higher quality materials, for example, they could... They get to that. And some of these are challenge questions. They need to explain why they can't do lead gold, for example. I think tree replacement contribution 20K is cheap. They could just say, "We'll do that, and be done with it." Heck, I just talked about half of them right there, which would be kind of a short presentation on their part. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah. I mean, if you're asking, I shared with the manager my thoughts, which really hinge mostly on fiscal impact. I feel like we've made pretty good progress with the folks on Lawton Street. I know some may not feel that way, but to me, the fiscal impact question and what path they take to achieve a better fiscal impact is, I'm willing to listen and hear, but that's, to me, the make or break.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I just wonder if some of these things, they're going to go back and go, "Well, we looked at it, but no, we can't do that." And is that a non-starter for anyone here?
Well, I think you do it at your...
Depends on which it is. That's what I mean. So do we really need to prioritize? I mean, Mr. Z has an interesting idea to put condos on top of offices, but if they look at it, it says, "How..." I mean, is that a non-starter for the rest of the project? How do we... How do we value those things?
Well, I think everybody's going to end up evaluating it based on their own point of view. But as I said earlier, to me, I think they need to come back with substantial progress, you know, whether there's something here, they have a reason why they can't do it. I think we'll have to evaluate their response, "Why can't do it because blank?" And some things may ring truer than others. But it seems to me this is pretty good direction, and I think it's consistent with what's happened at our hearings, what we've said consistently, I think, for the past months at our various hearings. So I think this is a good start, or a good document to send back, and kind of see where it comes out.
Yeah. The question was, would we be adding more? And I think, you know, I think this is kind of where we are.
Well, I mean, to me, this isn't an all-inclusive list of things or comments, and I think there may be other things of lesser stature, but they still will be important to some people, and there may be things that can be easily done. But the idea was to give them, I think, the major issues, the major concerns, and to me, this list provides it.
Mr. Shields, how does this... Are there any other issues that staff identified that weren't on this list?
I would put those in the... In my opening comments, that this is meant to be kind of the high-level things. In the staff comments, there are thousands of details that we work out at the staff level, and so that discussion's going to continue. But these are meant to be the ones that rise up to, you know, the council's... But these are meant to be the ones that, that rise up to, you know, the council has a focus on these, wanting to see substantial progress on them.
I just want to make sure that we didn't leave out anything that was big that might have risen from the staff ones, that we were consistent across the two, even if the staff one has a lot more detail and that can be worked out.
Right. I don't think so.
So I think part of the reason I'm trying to understand what it is that's most critical to people was that I had, I felt that the applicant had made substantive progress at the last meeting, and yet everyone said no. If you listen to the conversation, a lot of the public comment that we heard was from the Lawton Street neighbors. You could come away from that meeting thinking that that transition was the critical thing. I just heard Mr. Duncan say that it's the fiscal impact. I remember when this project first came up, the big concern everybody had was, can we absorb additional apartments? You know, what's the net fiscal impact? You know, what, what is that gonna do to the pressure on the schools? And there had been a lot of resistance to apartments at all, and a lot of preference for condos, which, you know, we have not really talked about at all. And so now I look at this list, and it has, you know, maybe, what, 15 things on it? And I'm, I'm just trying to understand what the priority is, that I think I, I heard Mr. Duncan say very clearly, it's the fiscal impact. These are all things that we'd like to see, but the bottom line is the fiscal impact. And is that something that the rest of council shares? Do you think we're still off on that fiscal impact? Is that the crux of what our issue is?
Be careful, you're asking people to agree with me, that's very dangerous territory.
Yes, I would say that it's certainly an important, and it's shown as important thing, it's the first thing on our list of about seven substantive items. So I think we're conveying that it is important, it's certainly important to me, I imagine it's important to most, if not everyone in the stable, and I think that's been conveyed, or at least that's what I've heard at our last meeting and earlier meetings. So I don't think this list is inconsistent with what's been said, and I don't feel like we have to necessarily say, this is our one thing, you know, take care of this and you're home free. I don't want to convey that message. And I don't think that is really an accurate one nonetheless, either. So to me, this list conveys it. I mean, maybe some tweaking needs to be done, but this is what I've heard, at least, at our various meetings, but if you feel differently, I mean...
I think I'm just trying to make sure that we are giving the public a clear indication of what's important to us, and that we are giving the developer a clear indication of what's important to move forward. And I, you know, I'm just, you know, we, we talk a lot about not wanting to create an environment in the city where it's difficult to do business with us. And for us to have been at first reading last week on this proposal, and to table it and come back with a really extensive list with, not without, clear direction, that feels like it's making it difficult. So I, you know, I'm just, I, for myself, I'm trying to understand what's important to each of you. I know something, everything on this list is important to one or more people, I get that.
I would argue that everything on this list is important, probably to three, four or more people on council. And I think this is, again, it's basically seven items. The fiscal impact, as Mr. Duncan said, can probably, that cat can be skinned in multiple ways, probably to people's satisfaction, here's some ideas for it. But you're really talking about, it looks like six substantive buckets of concern, and I don't think they're inconsistent with what's been said. And I think the problem you have in working with the development community is when you keep moving the ball, that you hear six items, a week later, here's six new items. To me, these are the same general items that have been in our discussions since day one. I don't feel like they're inherently inconsistent with things that have been said throughout this process, but others may feel differently. But I, in looking at this, these are the same sort of things that I think we've been talking about all along.
Yeah, I agree with that. Just to be clear, though, I do not favor skinning cats, just wanted to be...
Not your cat?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, is there? Well, thank you, Mr. Shields, I guess you've got some marching orders on that. Why don't we move on to the last item on the agenda, which is schedule and requests?
Request, three. Yeah, because next week's meeting will be a doozy, and then we really, we only meet once more this summer after next week, right? So, and some of us are gonna be away for a time, so there are a couple of things that I just wanted to raise. Somebody asked me the other day for a report on how the bus stop sign camera program did after we started it up Halloween of last fall, and I have to admit, I haven't the foggiest idea. If I heard about it, I've forgotten. So maybe we could get a little report on that. What's up with Miller House? Maybe some of you all know, I don't. And Assistant City Manager Ms. Mester is, I understand, going to come with her report final on the Foster's Cable Access Corporation, and its structure, management, and so forth. I commend to all of you to read whatever it is that she comes forth with, and, you know, I'm hopeful that we might have a discussion about that as a group sometime, either at the mid-August meeting or in early fall, so that the folks who volunteer for that group will get some clarity about what the full council thinks. I think that's it.
Okay, other comments, requests?
I'll just say very briefly, on the Miller House, I'm on the verge of sending out a draft term sheet for the city council for you to, just to read and provide comments on. There's one issue that has stopped me from doing that, that I think we're gonna iron out fairly quickly, but then I'll get it out for you all to, to take a look at.
When the EDC meets this Friday at 9:00, right? And we have a hard stop at 10:00. Circulated an agenda that I believe everybody has seen, but I'll send it out again to be sure.
I just wanted to check about that Friday morning meeting schedule. We've got the Campus Economic Development Working Group at 7:30, Budget and Finance at 8:00, and EDC at 9:00.
We moved EDC last time, so it's somebody else's turn this time.
So the 8:00 and the 9:00 would probably work. It's the 7:30, the Economic Working Group. Probably, we need to, that's the conflict with Budget and Finance, I think we need to work that out.
I think that's difficult, I mean, I, I think that's gonna be a challenge to move, just because everybody seems to head off to work right away at 9:00, so...
If we move Budget and Finance, would that, what, that meeting runs an hour, an hour and a half?
Usually we go till 9:00, and if we need to go shorter, we can. But that's usual, 7:30 to 9:00 is usually the time.
So the plan was with the Economic Working Group to talk about this fiscal impact analysis in a little bit more detail, and some, you know, initial discussion regarding rails that, for modeling. So if I could follow up with you on an alternate day for Budget and Finance, would that, would that be okay?
Yes. My only concern is that we are taking a very critical vote on Monday night, in which there is a great deal of financial analysis.
The July 25th GovOps meeting is canceled, so note that.
All right, what else we got?
To repeat, I won't be here on August 14th.
Okay. All right, what else we got? Anything else?
Is that the same that we've already reviewed from the past CIP discussions, or what we have?
What time and where is that meeting?
7:30, City Council Chambers.
Okay.
Right? Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead.
My question just goes to the information going out to the community regarding the referendum and the CIP, in particular, the referendum. Because as we know, there's tons of information, and if we pass this on Monday, then how do we make, somebody's gonna start paying attention on Tuesday. How do we make sure that this information is digestible, understandable, to the most amount of people at the most time? And I feel like councilor, staff, or all of us together need to come up with a very clear plan as to how to make that happen. So I want, just want to put a request and a marker in that that has got to happen.
All right, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Let's do it, all right.